I'll call the meeting to order. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Welcome to the October 10th Business Meeting of the Milford Board of Education. Again, I apologize for the delay in starting the meeting. For the record, Mr. De Greco has indicated he will be late arriving. Turn the meeting over to Dr. Fieser for student staff recognition.
Good evening, everyone. So the question that I want to pose, although I won't ask for a raise of hands, but how many of you have dreamt of becoming a writer? How many of you ever crafted a story? I have many, many, many times the same one over and over again, how I used to have bad dreams as a kid and God would not let me up to heaven, opened up the room with all the bad dreams. I can remember this, it was like I was like eight years old invisibly. But my point being is that I often thought, gee, I ought to write a book about this, but never did. So tonight, what we're here for is to celebrate a particular teacher over at Foreign High who had the vision to say, I'd like to really create a class where we could have kids do story and writing and get it published. So, let me just first of all introduce to you Mr. Rick Rayusi standing over here. He's a senior teacher at Foreign High School. With him tonight are Max Berkowitz, our principal from Foreign, as well as our instructional leader for English Language Arts, Jen Sino. And there are some students here, I'm going to hold up on the students for a second till I talk a little bit about the class and what it involves. So about a year ago, in September of 2015, I wrote to Foreign High School's English teacher, Mr. Rayusi, to congratulate him on a grant that he had received, $2,000, which was to help fund a new course, Advanced Creative Writing. Mr. Rayusi's goal in this pilot program was to have students become authors and editors and to get a piece of their writing actually published. Well, tonight again, we are here to congratulate Mr. Rayusi and we would be congratulating all of his student writers, but they've all graduated from Foreign High, so we can't have them here this evening. With the hard work, efforts, and talents of last year's selected high school seniors, they were recruited by Mr. Rayusi to participate in the class based upon their writing ability and under, of course, Mr. Rayusi's tutelage, the first of a book of short stories has been published. "Foreign Visions" is the title of the book. In fact, if you see it here, play on words, "Foreign Visions." We gave each one of you this because this is the title of all of the authors from last year's class, as well as the artists. You might want to wonder, well, what are the artists? The reality is, is that we had 17 short stories that were written by 11 of different authors from the class last year. We also had 17 pieces of artwork, Mrs. Hudson's art class. Students actually, I'm assuming, read a particular story and then matched a piece of their own artwork that would go with it. So in the book, you have not only short stories, but you might have a piece of artwork, for example. This is artwork throughout the book, in other words, there's one of us showing, but there are, there's artwork still. So the thing that's, I think, most exciting is that this is the first time that we've had a book like this published at Foreign High, to my knowledge, maybe years and years and years ago, but certainly, you know, in recent history or maybe even longer. The writers actually put their skills to test because my understanding is, is that they actually submitted their writing to the publisher, who then edited, retweeted, probably scratched out different things, wrote notes, et cetera, which came back to the students. So the students experience what real writers do when they submit a piece to publishers, which is they experience that, you know, your first piece is not your final piece by any means. And we, you know, we see that all the time with respect to writers who will, in their dedication or in their acknowledgements, they go on and on and on about all these people that helped them during different pieces of their writing to get the piece published. This is what our students experience, which is tremendous. It was an incredible learning experience for all of them, and I know Mr. Rayusi wrote me a note when he sent me the book and talked about his own learning experience, how much he grew as a teacher just through this whole process. So, I want to thank him, but I also want to introduce three students from this year's class and really want to congratulate them for being selected for the class and also to applaud you for your risk-taking, because this is not an easy kind of thing. As I said, all of us may have dreamt about or maybe still dream about, gee, would I like to really get something written that would be for more than just the immediate board, for example, that might hear something from me or my family or something. But beyond that, and the students who are here this evening, they are in this year's class, which will then be, presumably, they will have pieces of writing that will be part of the second edition of Foreign's Vision and be published authors as well. I mean, that's just so exciting. I think about these students, I think about the 11 students that left Foreign and whatever they've gone into, whether it's college or work or in the military, whatever it may be, they're published authors. That's an incredible achievement on the part of young people, just tremendous. And again, we have Mr. Rayusi to thank for that. So, I want to introduce three of our students who are in this year's class. Annie Siniscali, you want to stand up, Annie? Congratulations. We have Kyle Lang, who's also here. And we have Jules Tua Zola.
Hi.
So all three of them are here. We have two certificates for each of you, and I'm going to ask Mr. Rayusi if you would come up also, maybe you would want to just say a few words when you come up. Why don't you bring your students up?
We brought a few books for you guys.
Oh, nice.
Sure. So, this was a full-year process. This is the first time that we've launched a class that took a full year for creative writing. Typically, we had a class that was a semester-long process, and the vision for this was ultimately to give them a true authorship experience. And we had a problem in that, in that we had to find funding for the book. And so we got a grant, and it is now a self-sustaining class and project, because the kids actually sold the book last year, and we were able to roll over that money to create this year's book. And the surplus of the money that we had went towards scholarships. We were able to give out $2,500 in scholarships to last year's seniors. The cool thing about it is, for 10 years from last year until 10 years from now, the seniors from last year will be getting royalty checks every quarter. And the first ones went out in September. So, really cool, real-life learning, and I was very happy with the outcome.
Really exciting. So I see you've brought books for each of the board members. Did you're reading? I think you can take their hands, that would be great.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Congratulations, great job.
Thank you. I'm finally getting to write, I'll buy one of your books. Thank you.
I also want to congratulate all the parents that are here this evening, family members, because I know you were supportive of your sons and daughters, and I would imagine that those folks that are not here for the seniors from last year, that there were agonizing moments, they're needed for you this year with your sons and daughters. But just remember that what they're engaged in is, talk about a real-world experience, it's just tremendous, and we're just so proud of everybody, really, really proud. So, again, congratulations.
I can see us adding book sales to our coffee shop down there.
That's right. All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations. We'll move on now to student reports. I believe Jonathan Law is going first tonight. We have Jillian and Tyler.
Good evening. We'd like to start off with academics. The PSAT will be administered October 19th for all sophomores and juniors. The Support Center at Law advises students to get the SAT app on their phones so that they can do the question of the day and track their progress. About two weeks ago, there was an opiate seminar created by health teacher Mr. Sweeney, which featured guest speakers, including the U.S. Senator Chris Murphy, and he spoke to students about the dangers of opiate drugs and the problem of drugs in Connecticut. There will be a field trip to the 9/11 memorial in New York City, and that will be November 10th. Their recommended curriculum was also put together by Law and Foreign teachers. Law now has an all-female robotics class taught by Mr. Robinson. There are 55 people signed up for the Washington DC inauguration trip. There will be a Veterans Day seminar to honor veterans put together by the Social Studies Department. At this time last year, the Law Academic Support Center saw 177 walk-ins. This year, we have had 258 walk-ins, or a 46% increase in the volume of students. In addition to the walk-ins, students have been utilizing the Support Center for assistance prior to taking a retake on tests. The average increase in scores on the tests is approximately 15 points. The English department has provided students with information regarding two essay contests, the VFW Voice of Democracy Essay, with awards up to $30,000. This essay asks students about my responsibility to America. The second essay is from the Connecticut Bar Foundation about taking a stand or taking a knee. Contest winners will be awarded a $2,000 or $1,000 prize. In guidance news, college visits from institutions such as Yale University and Boston College are ongoing. Open House for eighth graders is being held this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Law. Meetings of guidance counselors and students about college planning are ongoing. Guidance has worked with the class of 2019 to assure that they have created college board accounts and link them to Khan Academy. Khan partners with PSATs and SATs to use students' scores to provide specific lessons to students and remediate their weaknesses. Emails from our College and Career Center are sent from all seniors whenever a new scholarship opportunity comes up.
In Law Sports News, Jonathan Law held their Fall Sports Day with numerous activities, capped off with a Fall Sports Pep Rally, honoring all 273 fall athletes, including multiple other games and activities to keep the energy going before the first home football game. All fall captains attended the SCC Captains Council with a presentation about the appropriate uses of social media. The average GPA of a Law student last year was 3.54, with 184 student athletes attaining a GPA of 4.0 or higher. As of now, the records for fall sports include a 3-1-4 record for boys varsity soccer, 2-3 for varsity football, 3-2-4 for girls varsity soccer, 7-5 for girls volleyball, 1-7 for girls varsity swimming and diving, and wins at the Milford Invitational and a third-place finish at the Hale Gray Invitational for boys varsity cross-country. So in general, it's been an optimistic start for many teams this fall season, and in fact, many teams are still able to compete and qualify for a spot in their respective state's competition. And last Saturday, the girls volleyball team held a big pink fundraiser at their match against Foreign, with benefits going towards cancer awareness and cancer prevention. And Law amazing news, last week Jonathan Law had middle school visits to Harborside and West Shore on October 5th and October 6th respectively, to speak to eighth graders about Jonathan Law, answering questions they may have had, and presenting last year's "I Am a Lawman" video. The Post-Problem Committee is planning their first meeting of the year. The Jonathan Law Band held their home competitive show on September 24th. Readly for Life ran with help from the National Honors Society, girls soccer, cross-country, and members of the Kiets Club. On September 10th, Dunland Automotives was used for a 9/11 first responders car wash. Members from Jonathan Law faculty and students both attended and assisted with washing cars for 9/11 first responders, and also took donations from other people to wash cars. Multiple fundraisers have been held by various sports and clubs for foreign grad Danny Kemp. Approximately $3,000 has already been raised. Jonathan Law has two new clubs, a new ultimate frisbee club formed by a freshman, and a new visual arts club formed by junior Dominic Puccetti. Jonathan Law held a celebrity scoop night at Rita's Italian Ice with profits headed towards its senior class. Three teachers from Jonathan Law came in to scoop Italian ice and serve it to customers. Many faculty members also attended, and students also attended. And the homecoming for Jonathan Law is scheduled for November 18th.
Thank you. Thank you. And then for Foreign, they have Julia and Pierce. Missed you last week, last month, Pierce. I'm feeling better.
Yeah, I'm sick. I'm feeling better now. So, I'll begin with academics. So, Mrs. Spoggin's vulnerable history honors classes participated in a Renaissance Fair during the week of September 23rd. This project-based learning opportunity allowed her students to apply the key contents they learned in class about various historical figures, events, and ideologies of the Renaissance to skill-based research they conducted on topics they were interested in exploring in greater detail. They were asked to generate their own inquiries, investigate their own topics, and represent their findings in written and visual form. Job well done to those who participated. As for guidance, Foreign High School has hosted several events for our current and prospective students, including ninth grade parent orientation, postgraduate planning night, and seventh and eighth grade open house. We will be co-hosting a financial aid night with Jonathan Law High School and the Academy on Wednesday, October 26th at 6:30 in the Parsons Auditorium. Foreign is also hosting small financial aid workshops with Holy Franklin from the ECMC Foundation. PSATs for 11th and 10th and 11th graders will be on Wednesday, October 19th. A number of students have successfully applied to college with more submitting applications this week to meet November 1st deadlines. Scholarships are added to the guidance website as they come in. Moving on to extracurricular activities. The Foreign Innovative Thinkers, also known as FIT, held a club fair for the freshmen and sophomore students, September 27th and 28th during conference time. Representatives from all the clubs available at Foreign presented information on their club and how students can become a member. Each club was required to set up a remind code app where the advisor is in charge of posting meeting dates and information that is sent straight to a student's phone or email. Students received a pamphlet with all the names and contact information available for the clubs at Foreign. The first Fall Pep Rally was an extreme success. The Foreign Innovative Thinkers did an amazing job promoting school spirit. Each student participated in class color awards, and the sophomores prevailed as the most school-spirited class.
In news, we actually have our senior Kyle Lang here, who completed his Eagle Scout project for the Foreign High School Athletic Department. Kyle designed, constructed, and installed his project, which is receiving marvelous reviews. His beautiful welcoming sign located on French Drive is a great addition to our athletic department and school. Kyle also built two kiosks for our school, one being located at the Fields House and the other near the entrance to the gymnasium. Information on a variety of topics will be available there for anyone that's willing to look. Thank you to Kyle for all this hard work and determination on the wonderful project for Foreign High School. In athletics, the Foreign's girls lacrosse team was honored by the Milford Prevention Council at their year-end meeting for a dangers of substance abuse. They held a fundraiser in the spring and raised over $2,200 for the Milford Prevention Council to help fight and educate against the dangers of substance abuse. The team received a trophy and a proclamation from the State Representative Pam Stenetsky, State Representative Kim Rose, and Senator Gail Slossberg honoring the efforts of the girls lacrosse team. Our fall sports team here at Foreign are past the midway point and will soon begin to prepare for the postseason. The boys and girls cross-country teams will be participating in the SCC Championships on Thursday, October 20th in New Haven. They will also be competing in the CIAC Championships later this month. The volleyball team, swim team, whiz girls, and girls soccer teams will all be close to qualifying for the CIAC state tournament. With several events left, hopefully they will all make it. The odds are looking great. Our fall captains participated in a half-day conference with the other SCC captains at the Floyd Little Athletic Center in New Haven last month. There, they did leadership, sportsmanship, and new rule changes. They went over all those and discussed the topics. The Foreign Athletic Department and Foreign Sports Booster Club have teamed up this year to honor a varsity athlete of the week. This athlete is being honored for all their seasons for athletic and academic achievements. So far, this new program has been a great success. The Athletics Department invites all board members to attend any of our athletic events. A listing of upcoming events can be found on our website or by contacting our Athletic Director, Anthony Mahtali.
Thank you. All right. So, students, if you want to head out and do your homework, this would be a great time to do it. We're going to move on to public comment. I'll read the public comment statement in the event we have any members in the public here that would like to address the board. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs. The board encourages speakers not to express personal complaints or inflammatory comments about the Milford Board of Education personnel or any person associated with the Milford Public School System. Security issues and matters relating to negotiations and grievances will not be permitted. Consistent with the principles of the Federal Education Right to Privacy Act, discussion of students is prohibited absent parental waiver. Please be advised that our meetings are televised live on Channel 78 on Cablevision. And if you'd like to address the board, please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anybody who would like to address the board this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to chair's report. I just want to thank the board for your diligence thus far with our beginning of our policy review. My hope is that we'll be able to complete the first readings of the 1,000 series tonight and move on to, hopefully, approval of them all at the committee of the whole meeting. And then we'll move on to the 5,000 series, correct Dr. Fieser? And I anticipate we'll be handling those a little bit differently because they're, it's a larger set of policies, they're a little bit more involved, we'll do them in blocks. Dr. Fieser will, you know, decide on the proper, you know, what's the best grouping of them. But, you know, we're moving along well, and I just want to thank the board again for your diligence with that. I'll move on to liaison reports. Can you come to the liaison report?
I have a little one.
Yes?
So the Milford Education Foundation has set up their new strategic focus for the year and reviewed not only their committee structure, but the mini-grants proposal structure. They approved a mini-grant for mindfulness, and they're putting out the mini-grants for teachers to apply. And three new board members were invited into the group. Thank you.
Thank you. No permit, no permission, please. Neither of us is very good, nor I can make the last name. All right. I attended the first PT Council meeting in September, and there was a lot of, it was just really some catching up for the new president's general housekeeping information. Just went over, you know, a few of the things that the board's been working on and filled them in on some of the policy work. That's about it. So, no more, no other liaison reports? Move on to superintendent report.
Thank you again, Mrs. Bonin. So the first report or highlight this evening is under our instructional division, and we actually wanted to get an update on the computer science pathway, which has been implemented this year in both the middle and high schools. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Burke.
Thank you and good evening. As you recall, in previous years, we've developed a computer science pathway, a career pathway. The intent is to be, have a brief introduction in the middle school years and have more specification into high school, and then culminating in a student-driven learning experience in their, most likely in their senior year, some sort of capstone project. Again, this is a three-year plan that we're trying to do in implementation. Obviously, we want students to go through the first couple of years before we got to that capstone project. So, tonight, what I'd like to do is give you a brief insight into some of the things that are taking place in the middle school. For the most part, what we're doing through this particular pathway is that we're looking at things that are currently in place and then looking for opportunities to enhance the curriculum where appropriate. We're still in that process, we'll be going through that process for the next three years. But for tonight, what I'd like to do is introduce Ms. Justine LaSala, our supervisor for Science, Technology Education, and Family Consumer Science. We're lucky enough to have a teacher and a student with us this evening, who are going to give us some further insights. But to introduce them and to introduce some other ideas, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. LaSala.
Hi. So we're just going to give an update on the work that we've done around the middle schools and the computer science pathway. Right now, we're trying to capture places that we can currently provide students with an opportunity to explore computer science in the middle schools. Remember, it's the idea, it's just a feeder program to the high school computer science pathway. So currently, that would take place within our technology education program. And so luckily, we have some visitors here. Alex Sheldon is a technology teacher at Harborside Middle School, and he brought one of his students with him, who I'll let us introduce. But I asked them to actually come and talk a little bit about the middle school technology program, how the computer science fits in with that, and the opportunities that students have to explore computer science in middle school.
Good evening. I'm going to stand over here. We're already going to be using the PowerPoint here, and Billy's going to be cutting for me. So, just a few things we'd want to mention tonight. Our overview of the program, what it looks like as far as scheduling, students take the program in middle school. How the projects relate to computer science, projects that are both on the computer and off the computer, and how they relate, of course, to the computer science pathway. Then our student Billy Weber is going to do a better job explaining one of our programs, West Point Bridge Designer, which is what we're doing. Okay, so for our overview, all students take it for one trimester, or 60 days. That happens in seventh grade and eighth grade. It's an exploratory course. We try to offer many different areas of technology education, as much as we can in 60 days, which a lot of times, it doesn't need a lot of time to mention a lot of these different areas, but we try to, we try to get as many as we can. This is the first class, the first introduction they've had to technology. They don't have it in elementary school, so this is their first, I guess, introduction into this world. First introduction into the human-made world of technology and what it is. We have many different areas. 100% of the students take this class, so our approach is a little bit different than it is in the high school, in that we have everybody. We want to make sure all the students feel connected to this curriculum, and we want to make sure they're enthusiastic, feeling to all the different needs, the different kinds that we have in our community. So, one of our projects that we do that relates to computer science is our robotics program. What this is, are these little NXT, Lego robots. We write programs for them on the computers, and then the students have to make them navigate through these little mazes or whatever the task is at hand that they have to do. The way that they drive is similar to a military tank, where there's two motors on each wheel, and they have to calculate how long does each motor need to run in order to be able to take it through this maze and see wherever it is that it has to go. It's not the easiest thing to do, because a lot of times, the margin for error is very, very small. So there's a lot of math connections with this, with how long the wheels may need to run, how many rotations they may have based on the circumference of the wheel, how many rotations it would take to go 25 inches or so, however far whatever distance is on the maze is that they need to go. Going further with some of the different mathematical connections, there are a lot of different if-or statements. When you get into the sensors down at the bottom, there are sound sensors, touch sensors, and light sensors, and those can help the robot navigate through this maze, knowing where the walls are, or objects and obstacles if they need to get to. Probably should have explained this before. The picture on the top is the robot itself. The picture on the bottom is the program that they would use on the computer to put in the first command being, the wheels run for this long until the next command happens, and so on and so forth. So, very much a great introduction to our computer science and having the student get the feedback using the robots. Moving on from there, we have Scratch. Scratch is all about assigning codes to different animated graphics. This allows the students to actually make their own video games, to see where these graphics, how they move around the screen, and what all the codes are to tell them what to do as they move about. We can also make some types of animated scenes and have, I guess, whatever you want to have moving around in the screen. You have to assign codes to those different graphics to have them do different things. It seems like a simple game, but when you think about like POM, where the ball goes from one side of the screen to the other, to have a middle school student make that, there's a lot of different factors that go in there. When the ball hits the top of the screen, it hits at a certain angle and has to reflect off a different angle, a lot of mathematical connections there. If it were to hit the paddle, how is it going to bounce off? Where is it going to go? What is it going to do? If it goes behind the paddle, something needs to happen to say that the game is now over and it has to restart. So, what you're looking at on this picture here is So, what you're looking at on this picture here is when this event happens, what is the graphic going to do? Where is it going to move? How is it going to get from one place to the other? And again, a lot of your mathematical logic connections with if the ball were to hit the side of the Pong screen, it's going to bounce off, or if it hits the paddle, what's it going to do in that particular situation? So, you look at the code for a basic, for the list of codes for a basic game like that, and it could be just hundreds and hundreds of different commands. Moving on to one of our projects that we do that's off the computer, we have the students make these tables. What we do is we typically put them in groups of four or five students, and depending on what size of classes, your group of four or five students needs to make one of these projects for every single student in the group. The catch is, we're going to build them one at a time, and you don't know which one you're taking home until they're all filled. So, that really gets them working in teams and gets them working effectively with each other. Quality of the project really goes up quite a bit. I like this project, I love this project, the students really like it too. I'd say high interest on there because typically 90% of the students when we do our survey like a lot of the hands-on approach, and that large appeal is very helpful for, again, that 100% of the population we have, but not, you know, we really want the students to feel connected to the learning, to the projects that we're doing. And then when we look at the objectives for these, which is work effectively in teams to design and implement solutions, I'm actually going to read them off of here so I can see it better. Communicate effectively both orally and in writing. That would deal with technical literacy and technical drawings that they would be using to communicate, communicate in writing. And think critically and creatively both independently and with others. And I find these objectives interesting. If we flip one more time, Billy. These are actually the objectives from the University of Rhode Island Department of Computer Science and Statistics. So, they are computer science-related objectives, and we can do them, we can hit them, I guess, for this different demographic and do computer science-related stuff that they're really interested in. So, moving on, this product, West Point Bridge Designer, which Billy's going to talk about here in a minute. This deals with designing bridges, building them on the computer, and then testing them and see if the truck is going to get from one side to the other. And if it works, great, we have to make it more efficient by taking all the pieces and making them smaller, changing the materials, changing whether they're hollow tube or solid bar, and getting the price of the bridge down to where it's going to be cost-effective to make. So, Billy's going to minimize our PowerPoint presentation right here, you can stand up if you want, and he has a bunch of different bridges on there. Billy's actually our record holder. We do our competitions, see who can make the work, the best working bridge for the lowest possible cost. Billy completely shattered the record last year in seventh grade, he's in eighth grade now, but I'll let him take the bridge.
All right, so hello. As Mr. Sheldon said, I'm in eighth grade this year, and I will show you each of the bridges that we have. Can you hit this off the sign? Or I can actually... So, this is the first type of the bridge. We have to do two of each kind, and we have to get below a certain price. This is a truss bridge, and each bridge has defining parts to it, such as you have this rail up above here, and the cross-sections down here, and then right here. That's the second type. This is a cable bridge, a suspension bridge, and some examples, the Golden Gate Bridge is a really famous one. The cables go, you have to support them right there, and this can affect the bridge because if you put them too thick, it would be a waste of time because it's supporting more than it, or less than it has the capability to be, and then if you put it too thin, the cables will just crumble. Next one. This is an arch bridge. You can see by the arch right here, sometimes the arch is below the actual area that the truck would be on, and then it's, could be up here. And then here are the two that I did, that couple of the record. This is the first one. It's an arch lattice, a certain type, has the cross-sections down here. And what you can do with it is, for example, you see hollow tube right here? You have the option for a hollow tube or a solid bar, and for the extra credit ones, you can test with this, and it makes it better because it's hollow, but it still holds up the same amount. And then here is my best one, is a three-hinged Pratt bridge that's like this. And one of the tricky parts about this that I found while making it is that you see that these, such as these parts right here, are thinner than these, so you might think that you can lower these. Well, when you lower them, that's the main support of the bridge, and that's where tension and compression come into play, and I will test this to show you what I mean. So, you can see when the truck goes by, certain parts of the bridge will go red or blue. The red means compression because this is getting tightened right here, and then right here, it's being pulled apart by the tension. And then you can set a one-truck lane or a two-truck lane. So, when you're making it, you use this to put the joints there, and that's how you connect the parts of the bridge, that's the actual pieces. You can change the size of it, I think you can go from 30 millimeters to 500. This one's 140, that's 160, they vary, they don't have to be the same at 70. And there's different materials as well. You can use carbon steel or different things, types of steel. And this is good because most people know what a, they know what a bridge is, and it's a real-life thing that you can connect from your experiences to the computer, and it helps you get a bigger, a better understanding of it.
Can we tie this into our structures unit? Students will actually build structures. It was a great activity for teaching triangulation, tension and compression, like Billy mentioned before, and of course, maybe handle...
I know, when my children were in middle school, they were doing bridges, but I think they built them with popsicle sticks and toothpicks. They did not have this in their tech ed classes.
That animation really shows the stressing quite a bit.
Questions? That's great.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we ready?
Yes, we are.
Next item on the agenda is our annual transportation report. Mr. Tally is going to take the lead on this.
As you know, each year, usually around this time, beginning of October, we come to present a transportation report. And as the board is aware, over the last several years, transportation has been a topic that the board has been particularly interested in. You know, and so we come to you tonight with, coming off the start of school, that I can tell you, over the last four years, it was the smoothest of the four. The only change, as you're going to see from the report and as you know, was the difference, the change in the walking distance guidelines that the board made to the policy. So, I'm just going to give you this, the facts as we have. Yeah? Oh. Put that on. Yeah, my, my laptop here? Okay. So, as you, as you're probably aware, but we just give you the updated facts each year. Milford Public Schools provides transportation for over 4,200 students on a daily basis. All of our 14 public schools, three parochial schools, and you may say, why three, since St. Gabriel's closed this year? Well, we actually transport to the Milford Christian Academy. In past years, we, in a number of years back, we did this year, and then for a number of years, we did not. And this year, there are actually four students that we transport to Milford Christian Academy as we are required to do by law. So, we still have three parochial schools, but as you'll see from the numbers, it's a lot different from St. Gabriel's to the four at Milford Christian. So, also, three technical and vocational schools and many out-of-district special education replacements. We utilize 62 buses in advance, that's combined special education and regular education, utilizing 119 bus runs and approximately 1,049 bus stops. Tonight's review is only for regular education. As the board knows, special education transportation is handled by the People Personnel Services Department, and those, the transportation for special education students is handled on an individual basis. So, tonight, we're dealing with just the regular education transportation. Just a few slides of just recap the things you probably know or have been in the updates in the past. Our cost per bus in 1516 was $46,590. 1617 went up to 3%. Our contractual weight, our contractual increase with Dura, which is $47,985. You already know the school's start times, but the 30-minute window is important. The reason it's important is because that really drives how many students we can put on the buses and how many buses we need because it's the distance that a bus needs to travel, where it originally originates from, and where it picks up its first student, and then where it drops off and starts its next run. So, the number of stops is dictated by the loading time and the age of each student. Obviously, high school students can get on the buses quicker than kindergartners can. So, there's differences in the amount of students we can get onto the bus in a 30-minute window and make it to the school on time. Obviously, traffic conditions also playing a role. As I alluded to before, the only change this year was the change in the walking distance guidelines. As you know, high school went from two miles down to one and a half, middle schools, one and a half to one, and the elementary schools stayed at one mile. So, here's the numbers, 1516 compared to 1617. The number of students bused, and you can see, I won't go through every number, but they're there for you to see. There's a net increase of 88 students, and you can see the breakdown by, by grade level. The number of bus stops, there's, there are, again, you can see where the, where the changes are. High school was minimal, middle school and elementary went up a little bit, and our parochial and technical school bus stop, the number went down for a net of 44 over the year before. The runs, bus runs, again, you can see the number, high school runs, middle school runs, and elementary and parochial, and a net reduction of three bus runs over the last year. Some of the factors to consider when comparing 1516 to 1617, and all of these, the board is aware of, but just to recap them. In 1516, we, we had grandfathered students from grade five, and we, and this was all due to reconfiguration and redistricting. The grandfathered students from grade five and the live-able multirage students who were grandfathered under the reconfiguration plan and redistricting plan were three buses. We had two additional buses, or two additional bus runs for Jonathan Law and West Shore, and that was to accommodate the, those students who were in the walking distance, who couldn't walk because the North Tuck Avenue project was taking place. That project is still taking place this year, and so those students are still being bused, but we, we've been told by the city that it should end around the holidays, and those parents will have plenty of notice that the bus will be discontinued when that time comes. We had two buses, as the board's aware, we, the board paid for two buses to the Boys and Girls Club. Those were students who were, currently had busing from JFK and Pumpkin Delight to the Boys and Girls Club, who were redistricted to Matthews and Meadowside. So, the board made the decision to basically grandfather those students on transportation for one additional year, and we had two buses that did that. Other, other things to consider, as you know, the number of riders went up because of the change in the walking distance guidelines. They were somewhat mitigated or lessened by the closing of St. Gabriel's, although most of those students went to either our schools or St. Mary's, so in most cases, we're picking them up anyway. However, we were able to reduce the number of stops for St. Gabriel's because most of those students, the buses, let me try and explain it this way. St. Mary's and St. Gabriel's don't have attendance area boundaries, and so you could have a student that was, that was going to St. Mary's, and right across the street was a student who was going to St. Gabriel's. So, in many instances, the bus runs mirror pretty much, you had one bus going to, one bus going to St. Mary's, and half an hour later, you had another bus coming through that was the St. Gabriel's bus. So, we were able to consolidate a lot of those kids that were previously St. Gabriel's students and are now either our students or St. Mary's students without having to, without having to add additional buses for St. Mary's or the school, because we could pick them up on the same buses that we have going through those neighborhoods. And then one additional thing, when we, when we were looking at what we might need for this year, the Trumbull Voag bus, we weren't sure where the students were going to be located throughout the city, and so we budgeted for two Voag buses to go into Trumbull, and as it turns out, we were able to get them all on one bus. So, that's a, that's an automatic savings that we have in our budget. One of, one of the new provisions that the board enacted a couple of years ago, which has become a pretty popular program, was the opt-in program, whereby students who were previously not eligible for busing after October 1st could get onto a bus, provided that there were seats available on the existing buses, that the bus didn't have to deviate from its, from its established route, and the students had to get to an existing stop, and that it would not have any adverse result in the cost or the timing, et cetera. It begins on October 1st, and some people say, why do we have to wait till October 1st? It takes us most of September to go through each route, to work out the details, and then to get an accurate count of how many students are on each bus to determine whether or not there's room on those buses. And so, it really does take most of September to straighten out the routes, and then we have an application process, and then we go through and look at each individual application to see whether there's room on the existing bus or there's not. And I can happily tell you that the vast majority of students who apply for the opt-in or the non-eligible student transportation were able to accommodate the vast majority. And one thing that the board was, the board really emphasized to us is that we wanted us to publicize this program or get the... us to publicize this program or get the information to parents, because we had heard in the past that parents just didn't know about the program. And so this year, at the beginning of, when the bus routes went out, communication went via a school messenger and email to all parents, telling them what bus route they were on, what their stop was, things like that, and also a message that any student who was not eligible busing could take advantage of this program. And in that communication, we explained the parameters of it and how they could access the form for it. So every, every parent in the district was sent that communication. Just the numbers of students who took advantage of the Opt-In program, and you can see the breakdown, I won't go through each one. It's broken down by school. Minimal on the elementary level. Interestingly, at Law and Fore, the numbers actually went down from last year, and that's probably because of the walking distance guidelines being lowered. So some of those students who would have applied for non-eligible status are now eligible under the new, the new parameters. Just a word on fuel. We've talked about this at budget time, but I think it's worth repeating. In 2014, as part of our discussions with Durham, we, they, part of our contract extension with Durham was for them to put a fuel, diesel fuel storage tank on their property. And what that would allow us to do is to buy gasoline at the city's bid price, it's a locked-in price, and has saved us tremendous amounts of money. In addition, that's for diesel. In addition, gasoline, because we entered into agreement with the city to be able to use their pumps for the gasoline, which also allowed us to purchase gasoline at the city's locked-in price, as opposed to the previous arrangement with Durham, which was they were gassing or fueling up at retail pumps under the, the retail prices. So you can just see the numbers. In 1314, we spent close to $300,000 on fuel. In 1415, after that, after the change took place, we spent less than $150,000, a decrease of 52%. And this past year, a combination of being able to continue to access this program and the cost of gasoline going down, we actually, last year, only spent less than $100,000. So over the, from 1314 to through 1516, we actually saved 68% on fuel, and I think that's, that's something that the board should be proud of, because those changes really did make a difference over the course of two years period. So I just, this is, this is just something that we add, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but many times, we get questions from parents about, you know, their bus stop and things like that. I just want the board to be aware that in your policy, there is a provision for parent responsibility. And that responsibility is that a parent needs to be responsible for the student from the time they leave their home to the time they get to their bus stop or the time they walk to their school. And I'm not going to belabor it, but in many cases, we hear from parents that, you know, that, you know, we're going to, we need you to pick up right in front of our house, and the fact of the matter is, there's a walking distance, and that walking distance is based on a safe walking route, but we have to make sure that, it just doesn't end there. Parents have to make sure that they have proper supervision for their students while they're on the route from our, from this stop. Okay, so that brings us to, at the last meeting, the board asked us to look at, well, I told you that our contract with Durham is expiring at the end of the school year, and we had to make a decision on where we were going to be going from here, whether we would be going out for an RFP or request for proposals, or whether we would make a recommendation to negotiate with Durham, as we have done for the past three extensions to the contract with Durham. So, so we researched the status of bus costs in other school districts, and we will present those findings to you now. Actually, much of this was done over the weekend and this afternoon, and so I didn't have time to get it into the PowerPoint, but I have handouts for you, so we'll go through our recommendations.
So Mr. Tuttal, before we move on to that, can we just see if board members have any questions on your report?
Sure.
Dr. Okay. Dr. Gregory?
On slides seven and eight, you have the number of students bused and then the number of bus stops. There was no change in the elementary walking distance. The number of students went down by 86 students, but the number of stops went up by 12. Can you explain how with fewer students and no change in distance, why we have 12 more stops?
First, the change in the number of students is primarily declining in elementary. And, and, yes, thank you, and the grandfathering.
So we grandfathered last year fifth graders as a result of the reconfiguration, and those students now have all moved on to the middle school, so that there's a reduction of students immediately from that.
And the increase in the number of stops, I pause the top of my head, I can't give the answer, but we will get that answer here.
Other questions? Ms. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On slide nine, where we talk about the number of bus runs, I see an increase of one at middle school and one at high school. So I remember last year, around this time, we were talking about many additional bus runs because of the change in the walking distance, and I believe a cost of, I think it was around $380,000 for the change in the walking distance, was the estimate?
Two eighty-eight.
Was it two eighty?
Two eighty-eight.
Two eighty. Okay. So two eighty, and the net impact really is only two bus runs, one at middle and one at high school. Am I reading that correctly?
Correct.
Okay.
And there's, there are a lot of factors that go into it. And if you recall, last year, we took the students as best we could, when the board asked us to look at the possibility, what it would mean, we took the existing students and we looked at where they lived, and then we came up with the best estimate of whether they would be added to those or not. Last year, the, we, our estimate for Jonathan Law was 66 additional students, there's actually 48. At Foren, we estimated that there could be 105 students, and there's actually 72. So total at high school, we said that there could be up to 171 students, and in actuality, there's 120.
Okay.
At the middle school level, East Shore, we estimated that there could be 24, there's actually 29. Harborside, our estimate was 13, there's actually 14. And at West Shore, we estimated that there could be 19, and we actually had no change at all.
Okay.
So in the private schools, we estimated an additional seven, there was an additional eight. So overall, the private schools, Laurelton, we estimated there could be four, we actually had a reduction of five. And that could be graduation, it could be students that decided not to go to Laurelton, we're not sure about that. Platte Tech, we estimated that there could be an additional 12, there's actually an additional 19. So the numbers, the numbers are a little bit all over the place. I think overall, we, we took our, we took our best estimate as we could at that time rolling ahead, and that's, that's all we're up to.
Okay.
I can also tell you that we, Judy Messelbead is the Transportation Coordinator, and Durham went to tremendous gains this year to, to look at every route and where we could change routes up, so that we would be able to, as best we could, consolidate those students who were new into redesigned new routes.
Okay. So I would commend you for doing that work and bringing the cost down, and bringing it down to a net of two bus runs. And I think maybe perhaps the initial estimate was just a little too pessimistic to begin with.
Could have been, but at that time, we were giving you, you know, I think if we gave you a false estimate, and we came back now and said that we're that many, that many more students over what we estimated, the board would be disappointed. So I hear what you're saying, we were conservative.
We also didn't know the impact of St. Gaves, and that was, and that was a factor in as far as considering potential bus runs, because we had, we at least knew, at the time the budget was presented, we didn't have names, but we knew the addresses of kids. So I know Judy, however, I should say Judy, actually mapped out what would it mean if, you know, we were going to have to transport.
Okay. I'm thinking back to when we did the, the change in the walking distance, I don't know if we knew about St. Gaves at that point.
We didn't.
Okay.
We didn't, but the overall effect now, it offsets, it offsets the total number.
I think in the budget, you did.
Right. Because I think it was.
No, no, the budget, we didn't, we didn't know that St. Gabriel's was closing until after the budget ended.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the explanation.
Ms. Krasinski?
Just curious, adding on to Ms. Federico, how much did the change cost us if it wasn't two eighty-eight?
Yeah. You'll see in the quarterly, quarterly budget report, we're estimating that we'll have a surplus in regular education of about $125,000, and in the Boag, we'll have an additional $48,000. So, so 200, well, the 280,000 was the math.
Right.
We had, we had thrown out.
Two oh eight, two eighty-eight was the estimate.
Right.
Was the range, I mean?
Yeah, there was, there was a wide range.
Yeah, there was a range, 208 to 288.
Right.
So I'm just curious as to what the cost actually was to us for two, two bus runs, really.
It's not exactly two bus runs, it's much more complicated than that, because some bus runs can, can do, some runs can go on a three-tier run.
Right.
Some runs can only go on two tiers, and there's some that just have one tier, that can only do one and nothing else.
So last year, you gave a number of bus, last year, at this time, we had 48.5, .5 buses. I'm not sure how the .5 was, but how many do we have this year?
Forty-six point five, off the top of my head.
Okay. So we're down two buses.
So some of the, some of the difference, what I'm hearing you say might be just student attrition, students graduating out versus where the new students coming, moving up live. And I would have, I would have assumed that you would have been able to maximize those high school bus runs, because we know that those buses have not been anywhere near full.
Correct. We did, and that's, and that's why we, in many cases, we had to redesign routes and to get them on, but still, knowing that there's 30-minute window, in some cases, we started the bus run a little bit earlier, which Arizona was like, because, you know, the students are waking up that much earlier. But in some cases, we did that so that we could maximize the number of students we could get onto a particular bus.
Other questions on this?
So is it fair to say, is this a fair statement to say that changing the walking distance didn't really cost us anything due to all the other factors? We're down two buses.
Right. But that's, a big factor in that is St. Gabriel's.
Yes.
Because we were able to, those, there were six bus runs for St. Gabriel's that are eliminated now. So that had a big piece to it. In addition, Platte Tech, we were able to reduce one bus run. So the balance is, it balances itself out. I think probably if I had to estimate, it's the difference between the 280 and the 127 plus 40, it probably cost us between $75,000 and $100,000, is my best estimate.
Other questions? Ms. Federico? Hello. Couldn't see you speaking. All right. Thank you. Ready to move on?
Yes. Okay. So I'd like to start on the two-page staple document, and I'm going to be flipping around to the three, the three pages that we just handed out to you. But on the second page of the staple document, I'm restating what I said in the beginning, that our Durham has been providing transportation services to our students since 2005. The initial contract was for five years, and there have been three, three-year extensions to that. And so 14 years Durham School Services has been providing services. We have an excellent relationship with Durham. They're, they provide responsive, cost-effective services to the district, and in 2011, and again in 2013, we conducted a survey of districts throughout the state to compare what prices we have and to see where we are. And so at this point, I'd like to refer to the cost comparison. That's the color sheet. And this goes, this goes out through my professional organization, which is the Connecticut Association of School Business Officials, and we're kind of at their, we're at the individual district's mercy as to whether they respond or they don't, but I can tell you, the last time we did it in 2013, we only, we received less than 30 responses, and this time, as you can see, we received 50 other than ourselves. What this is, what this is showing you is, we took, there are many different size buses, but by far, the most utilized bus is a 71-passenger bus. That's the vast majority of buses in our fleet and other fleets throughout the district. So just for comparative purposes, we're using the 71-passenger bus and the bus that other districts have for that. And so you can see, in this current school year, in the 1617 school year, you can go down the list and see what school districts are paying, you can see the number of buses that they utilize, and as you can see, we, the current pricing that we have in 1617 is in the top third of all of the school districts that responded to our, to our survey. At the, at the very bottom, in the blue box, you can see, our price in 1617 is 265.11, the average is 288.39, and they range from a low of $230 to a high of $400. And we plugged in what our costs would be over those years. And then we looked at those school districts that have costs locked in for those, where do we stand? And so, in the green, in the second column, 2017, 2018, and highlighted in green, those are the districts that would have prices lower than us. And as you can see, it's, it's all the ones that are currently, currently above us. And again, the, our price down below, our price would be 273, the average 299, a low of 245, and a high of 468. I won't go through each number, but you can see that, you know, consistently, we stay pretty much, it's pretty much consistent. There were prices, if there were districts that had lower prices before, they continue to be lower. If there's prices, if they were higher, they continue to be higher. But overall, our, we're in the top third of those surveyed. We think that this is very competitive pricing. But the next column over, who pays the fuel, really is huge. It's huge to us. The Durham contract states that they need to pay the first dollar of every gallon of fuel. And for us, that equates this past year to $98,000. We spent 98, or we consumed 98,000 gallons of fuel between diesel and gasoline. And so, that's $98,000 that we're taking off of our bill. And if you can see, as you can see, of the districts that are lower than us at this time, there's only three of them that also have the gasoline paid by the bus company. The other ones, the district has to pay for those. And so, if you add what the districts are paying in for fuel, I would venture to say, and we don't know that, we don't know how much they're paying, but I would venture to say that that pushes us much further up on the list as the most competitive prices in the state or in our survey. There's, there's one thing that I want to point out with Wallingford, because we're many times compared to Wallingford. It's a very similar district to ours. They have prices that are lower than ours, and the bus company also pays for the fuel. The difference, the big difference between us and Wallingford, you can see the number of buses, because all of their special education out-of-district placements are provided for by Durham. And we had, I won't belabor this point, but we had extensive discussions with Wallingford as to why they do that, and also to determine whether the system that we have, which is the predominant one around the state, which is to go out to bid on an annual basis for individual out-of-district placements. And from Wallingford, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but the Transportation Coordinator said that this is just the easier way for them to do it, not necessarily the cheaper way to do it. When we, as I said, each, each summer, in June or July, actually, it's July, the Special Education Department provides to us the exact out-of-district placements that they're going to have. Obviously, no names. And what their services are that they're going to need, if they need a wheelchair, some of them, some of them need a wheelchair lift and an aid, it's very specialized. And it's also specialized as to where they're going to be going. Some, we could have an out-of-district placement for a special education student that's up in the Hartford area. I don't know what we do, but, but we could. And, and so, we also, where possible, combine, combine students in a single vehicle. And we don't take a single-source vendor. We take the lowest, the lowest reliable for each student. So, I, Carol, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we have three or four vendors that do our out-of-district placements. And so, I, although, I mean, I don't have exact numbers to back it up, I think that in the long run, and in my discussions with Wallingford, they would probably agree that we're, we're getting a much better price than they're getting when you factor in the out-of-district placements. And so, their, their cost per bus per day is lower than ours, but they have 100 buses or 100 vehicles that they're using. So, again, we get compared a lot of times to Wallingford. We've dwelling on that for too long. But I think what this points out is that we're very confident that we have very competitive prices and those that are probably the lowest, some of the lowest prices that we see around the state. And so, now going back to our staple sheet, if you go to the front, we really have only had about two weeks to negotiate, if you will, with Durham. But at this point, this is what we preliminarily agreed to. Very tentative at this point, but we've come to a meeting of minds. You know, everything has to be broken down into details, but we've come to a meeting of minds. And this is, this is what, where we're at today. A five-year extension to the contract, which would go through the 2022 school year. The proposed contract would be 3% per year, just as it's been for, definitely the last three, and I think it was 3% the previous year, the previous three years also. As I've already said, even with the proposed increases, we believe that we'd have some of the lowest prices around the state. The dollar, I've already talked about that and how important that is to us. It equates to, close to 100,000 dollars added to our, to our, reduced on our bus cost. And then I have a breakdown of what we're currently paying on the city's price and what we would be paying if we weren't on the city's price through Durham going out and getting that tank. As you can see, we're currently paying a dollar, roughly a dollar 43 for diesel, and the retail price is $2.40. So, it's a huge difference. And that's due to the storage tank that Durham has on its lot. I also went into gasoline prices that we get from the city's locked-in price. Durham will continue to assume responsibility for purchase, maintenance, repair, and replacement of all the cameras that are on the buses. That's not a given. There's many school districts around the state that do not have any cameras on their buses. We have, we have them now on all of our buses because that was one of the provisions in the extension these past few years. The board insisted that Durham take over the ownership, purchase, the ownership, the maintenance, et cetera, of cameras on every single bus. Over the next four years, Durham will replace 10 buses per year, which is huge, really, when you think about it. So, at the end of four years, we'll have virtually, virtually every bus in their fleet will be five years or better. A new feature that Durham would include, if this, if their contract is extended, is a, it's called the Durham Bus Tracker App. It's a parent app where the parents can download it to their mobile device, and it allows them the ability to see their child. They, they have a password only for their child, but they can go on in real time and find out where the bus is, what time it's due at their house, what time it's expected to be at the school, and what time the student was actually dropped off at the school. And on the, in the afternoon run, same thing. They can see, parents will be able to see exactly where the bus is, when it's, when it's expected home, and things like that. So, in other districts where this is being used, it's extremely popular. It causes the bus company some heartaches in the beginning because parents tend to try and wait till the very last minute. So, they'll say, well, my, my, my student's bus is, you know, three blocks away, so, you know, we still have two more minutes. And sometimes that causes the bus companies some heartache if the student is at, is not at the bus stop and has to wait. But from what they tell us, this is a feature that parents love. And then the last thing, which I think is, is a big one, and there's still a lot of, this is, this is the first time the board is hearing this, but in the past, we had to have four start times because there just weren't enough buses to accommodate eight elementary schools, really, was the, was the issue. Durham is now committed to putting, if the district wants, this is, this is a decision that's very preliminary, but if the district wants, we could put all of the elementary schools on the same start time. So, we would have a high school start time, a middle school start time, and all eight elementary schools on a third start time. And then the parochials and the tech schools would go filtered in on the first and the second tier. We couldn't fit those on the, on the, the elementary school tier. So, what that can do for us, as far as transportation goes, is we'd be able to, instead of having four tiers with 30-minute windows, we could have three tiers at, or three bell times with slightly increased amounts of time. So, maybe, while preliminary, instead of a 30-minute window, we could have a 40-minute window in between, which means that we can pick that many more kids up, which means we can be that much more efficient and hopefully lower the amount of bus runs and ultimately the number of buses. So, we think that there's potential for cost savings going through this, but also, again, something that the board will have to take a look at in the slide, and we think that this could be one of the parents, too, having all elementary school students on one bell time. So, there's that. Again, to the back page, based upon the research that we've done and based upon our discussions with other school transportation coordinators throughout the state, it's our belief that it would be advantageous for us to continue our relationship with Durham and to negotiate a, a, an extension to the contract, as opposed to taking the risk going out to an RFP where we can get, you know, sometimes, there's a risk. There's risks. We know what we have, we know it's good service, and we know we're getting good prices, and we think that there's a risk to go out to bid, that we may not be able to maintain that. So, for those reasons, we're recommending that the board authorize us to negotiate a five-year extension to the current contract with Durham Services, based upon preliminary information that I gave the board. I don't want to answer any questions.
So, first, do we have questions? Mrs. Krzyszczewski?
Thank you. If we go out to an RFP, are we required to hire the lowest bidder?
It's generally the lowest responsible bidder, but we would have, there are subjective factors that we would have factored into a scale. And service would be one, software would be one, there would be a number of different things that we would have factored into the scale. So, you would not be locked in 100% to lowest responsible bidder. But it's hard to determine, how do you determine from a company that's never bid here before, that has no experience with, what their service is going to be? So, there's, there's risks. That was one of the things that we, we, that's when we talk to different transportation coordinators, the norm around this, not the norm, but more often than not, districts renegotiate their contracts with their bus companies if they're getting good service and if they're getting good prices. If they're not, and they, if they're at the bottom of this, this list and they're not getting good prices, it makes all the sense in the world for them to price the market. Or if they have the bus company that they're getting poor service from, complaints from parents and things like that, they would go out to bid. But many of the districts we heard, it's a huge, it's a huge change to go to a company that has no experience with the district, no, you know, runs are brand-new, they'd have to build it from scratch, they would have to pay for a whole new fleet, which we probably would end up paying for in the first couple of years. So, I hope that answers your question. We're not, we're not locked in, we're not 100% locked in to lowest price.
Mrs. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When this cost comparison information was provided, did anyone provide who their bus service provider was?
We did.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't think that it was all that pertinent, but we could give it to you.
Well, I was just curious if you saw any patterns, like the, the top section here, was there any particular bus company that was frequently in the top 10, or in the, in the lowest-priced 10?
No, they were all over the place. The, the, the main companies in Connecticut are Gattco, First Student, and Durham.
Okay.
And then there's, there's many independents. But those are the main ones, and there was no, there was no company that stood out to us as being their lowest.
Okay. That's all I was curious about. And also, if anybody else has Durham that's getting a significantly better deal than us?
Well, actually, Stratford didn't respond.
Okay.
But we know what Stratford's prices are.
Okay.
And they're about $25 higher than we are.
Okay.
And they pay for 100% of fuel. Stratford pays for 100% of fuel.
Okay.
And they have Durham.
Okay. All right. And then on the, the three-tier options, can you just explain, I thought we have a three-tier system today.
We, we, okay, it's, really what I'm talking about is three different bell times.
Start times.
Start times. I'm, I'm saying tier, but we, we, we're most economical and most efficient when one bus can do three tiers. So, they would, for instance, they would do a high school run or a tier, and they would do, go on and do a middle school run or a tier, and then one of the two elementaries. That's when we're most efficient because we can take one bus at that cost and divide it by three runs. Because of the 30-minute window and from where buses are going, not every, not every bus run can do three, not every bus can do three runs.
Okay.
And so, many of our runs are, I mean, many of our buses do two runs. The private schools and Platte Tech, all of those buses can only do two runs because their start times are different than ours. They're, we're, we're picking up students is further, much greater areas than our students are, and traveling much further to get to the school they're at. So, those schools only do two. And then there's a very small number that can only do one. One that comes off the top of my head is the Trump of OAG.
Sure.
That can only do one. So, that's, that's the difference between bus runs versus what I'm talking about here is three start times, as opposed to four start times.
So, would we lose efficiency? Or is Durham agreeing to do it in a way that we won't lose efficiency?
We would strive to, we would strive to have every bus do at least two tiers, maybe three. And where we think that Durham may have to have additional buses because doing four elementary schools in, I mean, eight elementary schools in one block, as opposed to doing four in four, they may have to add some additional buses, but we're going to make that up in the increased efficiency in the number of buses, or the number of students we can put on a bus.
Okay. Because we still pay per bus, right? Okay.
But with a 40-minute window, which is a 30-minute window, it allows more students to get on the bus.
Okay.
The 30 minutes is, just really locks you in. You can only pick up so many because then you've got to, you know, factor in how much time is it going to get to the school. So, for example, 10 minutes added on makes a huge difference with respect to how many kids you can pick up.
Okay. But in terms of our cost, we could still end up with more buses, which would cost us more money? Durham is just being flexible with the, with the times?
Well, they're adding more buses.
They are.
They didn't have enough buses before to do it.
I see. Okay.
They're making more buses available to us.
Okay.
to doing four in four, they may have to add some additional buses, but we're going to make that up in the increased efficiency in the number of buses, or the number of students we can put on a bus.
Okay. Because we still pay per bus, right? Okay.
But with a 40-minute window, which is a 30-minute window, it allows more students to get on the bus.
Okay.
The 30 minutes is, just really locks you in, you can only pick up so many, because then you've got to, you know, factor in how much time is it going to get to the school. So for example, 10 minutes added on makes a huge difference with respect to how many kids you can pick up.
Okay. But in terms of our cost, we could still end up with more buses, which would cost us more money? Durham is just being flexible with the times?
Well, they're adding more buses.
They are.
They didn't have enough buses before to do it.
I see, okay.
They're making more buses available to us.
Okay.
But we're going to do our best to load those buses up with kids.
I see.
So that we don't have to, so that there's not an overall increase.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So if I could just dovetail off of that, because I was confused as to where it says Durham will provide the necessary resources, so what are the necessary resources? The additional buses?
Buses.
Which we don't have.
And drivers.
Okay.
The, one thing that concerns me with possibly changing school start times, I thought, and I could be wrong, that part of the 30 minutes was because parents didn't want their kids on buses long, so that was where the time was, part of the time issue was trying to reduce time that kids are on buses, so they're not sitting on a bus for 40, 45 minutes.
That, I agree with you that parents don't want their students on buses for more than 30 minutes, and we strive to do that, but that's not the reason that we have four start times. We have four start times because there's.
No, but I thought that was the reason, was part of the reason with the, that we were looking, or that the board looked at, prior board looked at, reconfiguration and all that, but part of, part of the busing was trying to reduce the times to 30 minutes, no more than 30 minutes.
That wasn't the reason, no, no.
That wasn't ever part of the discussion?
The only reason, the only reason the 30 minutes is there is because we need to have four start times to accommodate the number of buses that there are. And that's where the 30 minutes, that's where we say we strive to only have students on the bus for 30 minutes, but if we could increase that to 40, and you have to remember that not every student is on the bus for 40 minutes.
Oh, no, I realized that.
And it's actually, it's 40 minutes between start times, so, you know, it takes a certain amount of time for the bus to get from a high school to its first stop, and then by the time, the student, the longest student may still be under 30.
And then my second thing, back to what Mrs. Federico said, I don't understand how we would save money or reduce, if we're, if we're paying per bus and we have to add more buses, how do we reduce that?
We're very close right now to Durham having enough buses. We're utilizing well less buses than we used to, when, just because of declining enrollment. When we started this contract, we were, I don't remember the exact numbers, but they were much higher than they are now. And so we're at a point now where the number of buses that we're utilizing for regular education, aside from special ed, is very close to what the number that Durham already has. So they're not going to have to add all that many more buses, and we're not going to utilize that many more buses than we're already utilizing.
Yeah, but I'm still confused. Why don't we pay per bus? We paid like $43,000 per bus, so if we're adding more buses, we'll pay $43,000 more per bus that we add, right?
We would if we, if we need more buses.
Okay. But I thought if we changed to all three bell times, then we'd have to add more buses.
Because of, because of all the factors, declining enrollment, the ability to stretch out from 30 minutes to potentially 40 minutes, we don't think we're going to need that many more buses.
But wouldn't some of that be offset by the fact that you no longer have this fourth tier, which sometimes requires additional buses?
Well, it does, it definitely does, because the max that a bus does is three tiers, so, yeah, yes. I mean, this is, this is all preliminary, and we can come back with, and the board may decide that we don't want to have three start times, we want to continue to have four start times. But this is one option that we now can take advantage of, that before Durham was saying no we can't.
So that's, that's the difference, is that we, we would have the option, which they would, if we wanted to go there and if we needed more buses, they would make more buses available, but right now, we have no option, so. Mrs., Dr. Gregory?
I'm going to let my other question go. Who is the bus provider for Ansonia?
Mr. Appesov said All-Star Transportation. I have, and I have, I have that master list, if you just bear with me for a second. He's absolutely right, it's All-Star.
It just appears that across the board, they're getting a better deal, and I'm still stuck on that whole idea of capitalism, that putting it out for competitive bid will drive a better bargain in general.
I hear what you're saying, but you picked one district. There's always, I don't, I don't know that it's realistic that we can be the best, but I really.
But don't we want to be the best?
We do.
And we want to get the best deal.
We do, we do. And I think when you factor in the fuel and factor in the service factor that we get from Durham and the familiarity, I think on balance.
So they're getting $60, 60 cents more per gallon of fuel. They also have many fewer buses, though I think, I don't know if that makes a difference or not, the number of buses that you need. Mr. Hagudor, you had a question?
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, I heard a question there. So we'd have to pay per bus extra for the extra buses, plus the extra fuel we're going to be using on top of that.
If we, if we needed to use.
If we needed.
I think so, so what I'm hearing is that, I mean, the, whether or not we were to change the bell times would be, that's a whole separate conversation, but what I'm hearing is that if Durham has said that we could have that conversation if we wanted to.
Yes.
How difficult would it be going out to RFP without that, I mean, really to go out to RFP, you have to go out with what our current situation is? I mean, does it?
That would be, we probably would put both options in the RFP.
I was wondering what, with the fuel tank, the fuel storage tank that Durham installed on their property, so if we were to change contractors, that pretty much goes away unless a new contractor were willing to put in a similar fuel storage on their property, wherever their property might be.
True, true. And we would, one of the things that we would, I mean, we couldn't, we couldn't insist on why, I think we could insist on it, it was part of the original bid when it was done in 2004, we want the bus yard to be in Milford, so that we can tax those, the city can tax those buses.
And that was something, actually, that, I don't believe that was part of the original agreement, but it was worked in at some point, because it took them a while to get their buses all in Milford, they were in Stratford to start with.
That's right. They were renting, they were renting behind the Milford Motel, and they could fit all of the buses in, so now with the yard that they have, you're correct, now we can tax all of the buses.
Other questions? Mrs. Krasinski?
Just, when you go out for an RFP, can't, can you set these things that, you know, we have to have cost sharing, that these are our requirements?
Sure, yep.
So then there's not a whole lot of, I mean, I guess you can't, you can only assume or guess what the service will be, but all the other factors are, are set items, right?
Pretty much. We specify, it's like the scope of work, it can be, you know, the scope of work, your hiring an architect.
Right.
And here, we're giving them the scope of what we want them to bid on.
And the only kind of up in the air thing is how good is the service going to be in reality?
Pretty much, yeah.
You have questions down here? Hagudor?
Do you know if Durham rents the property to keep the buses on, or do they own it? Because I know a lot of bus services, they'll take over that same lot.
They rent it.
So the new bus company could possibly take that same rental space, because I know they do that a lot of times, they still park at the same place.
They could, I don't know what the terms of the, of their rental agreement are, but I suppose if that's a possibility.
Well, yeah, just if you're keeping them in Milford, that, you know, they lease them, because I know a lot of, I work for another company, and, you know, when the new bus company was the same place and a lot of same drivers and everything, that switched over.
Any other questions? So I guess at this point, we need some kind of consensus to direct administration, either that we, you know, want them to go out to an RFP, or that we, you know, would move that they, you know, to authorize them to enter into further negotiations with Durham, we need to give them some direction.
And of course, if you, if you authorize us to negotiate, when you bring a final, we'd be up to the board to approve a final, but this would basically be the guns of it.
So in terms of a RFP, is there actual costs involved, I mean, there's, other than your time involved, to actually put together the request proposals and to go out and then to gather the information? Is there any other cost factors that, and what's your timeframe?
We'd have to do it very soon.
You need to have a decision by?
We need to, we would need to select company, especially if it's a new company, we'd have to select a company before the first of the year, because they, anybody would have to purchase new buses, work out lease agreements, you know, all those kinds of things.
Mr. Whiskeman?
Clarification, the current contract would have Durham until the end of this school year, right? This is not, you know, it wouldn't be a new bus company until the beginning of the next school year.
Correct.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You know, I.
I mean, I understand that you've got to make arrangements at that time, but we're not worried about a change in the middle of the schedule.
No, I'm just, no, 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 I'm just determining how quickly a decision needs to be made in terms of going out to RFP, getting the information back in, and then the board making a decision, what they would like to do.
Could I just offer a comment, just in terms of my own experience? I understand that we want the best price possible, and so we're looking at the communities that may be less per bus, you know, I understand that. I will say that I think whatever the decision the board makes, they really should factor in, so you said Durham has been with us for 14 years, what the quality of service has been over those 14 years. I think that the board also needs to give serious consideration to the, and it's, there's no two ways about it, having been through it in three different districts, the turmoil that comes with, particularly the first year, when a new bus company comes in, because everything is absolutely brand-new, brand-new for the bus company. They don't know the streets, they don't know the neighborhoods, they don't, they just, it's brand-new. So, you know, I, I just would ask the board to think through what the, you know, what the, you know, all the factors that you want considered in making that decision, and I understand cost is one of those, but I also know when the board extended the contract three years ago, we were, the, where we, we were still clearly up at the top, but we only had 30 districts at the time, and now we have 50, and we're number 15 out of 50, which is, and then if you look at the number of districts that are, you know, within $10 of, you know, we can, a gas, you know, per, or the cost of bus, you know, per day, I mean, per bus, I just would ask you to think it through, because, you know, when you go out on RFP, you're saying, we really want to look at all these different bus companies to see what they want to offer, but what you're also saying is, you're willing to say, we're going to set Durham aside and really give consideration to some other companies, and, you know, in doing that, I would just hope that you would, in your own mind, say, there's an absolutely very, very, very legitimate reason to do this, because it's, if we go that route, you know, you may be in a position where you're making a decision that you're kind of backed into a corner and not sure, is this really what I want to do? That's just been my experience, and so I just put that out to you.
If I could, if I could elaborate a little bit further, some of the things that the board may not be aware of, that Durham does for us, when we have, well, for instance, when hurricanes hit us, or when blizzards hit us, Durham actually, before we actually do a run, before we actually decide to open schools again, Durham will go through and do, at their own cost, a dry run, and the information, so those drivers are driving every single street, and the information that they give back to us is invaluable, not only to the district, but to the city and to ULI, because they're reporting back to us things like, you know, where trees are down, where wires are down, those types of things. They have been, Durham has been a real partner with us, particularly after Sandy Hook and the, you know, the much, much, much greater emphasis on security, the school security working group from the beginning, Durham has sat on that faithfully, been at every meeting. We now, which we never did before, we have evacuation drills on every bus twice a year. I mean, I just can't say enough for the partnership that we have with them, they truly are an extension. Do things go wrong once in a while? They do, but they're really an extension of Milford Public Schools, and, you know, I think it's, I think that's certainly worth considering.
Mr. Jaguzinski?
Jim, how much do we pay to Durham? What's the annual cost?
Well, in, I mean, do you want everything, or just regular, regular education?
Regular education.
In 1516, we expended $1,964.
$1 million?
$1,964.
Is, does Durham, are they the bus provider for the special bus runs after school, for the middle school and for the WAVE program?
Yes.
They are. And what, if, my other question, just as a PTA parent, I know when schools want to do field trips.
Excuse me for one second. Do you use?
They do, we used to use Durham, but through negotiations, we actually got a better deal with Winkle, and Durham has not negotiated with us since, but the first couple of years it was Winkle.
Yep, and there's a reason, there's a reason for that. Durham's first priority is, number one priority is the bringing the students home at the end of the day. Their second priority is athletics, and many times, they don't have buses in the afternoons that are available for things like the WAVE program and the after-school, other after-school programs. That's just, that's just the way it is. I can tell you one, one thing, Mary's very fortunate to have gotten Winkle to give a better price, because we hear horror stories from teachers who want to take a field trip, want to go on a field trip, but Winkle, I mean, Durham doesn't have enough buses because they're doing athletic runs in the afternoon, and so the schools either have to come back early before they start their afternoon runs or their athletic runs, and when we have to go to Winkle, they're charging us three and four times what Durham pays.
Well, that was going to be my next question, because I know for PTA events and field trips and things, you get charged outrageous amount of money. If Durham is going to have more resources, then will buses be available to the schools for field trips and things like that?
During our discussions, that's one of the things that we brought up, because we want to be able to accommodate every field trip, we want to be able to. want to be able to accommodate every field trip, we want to be able to accommodate every after-school activity, but there's only a certain number of buses, and they're committed to those priorities. So we, with additional buses, we think that that will help a little bit. And Durham does do the vast majority of field trips and other specialized things, but in some instances, they, rather than, say, an elementary school coming back at 2:30, they have to come back at 1:00. So they make accommodations wherever they can, and they work with us. Almost, you know, if there's a, if there's a class that wants to take a field trip and they can't, or Durham's saying that we just don't have a bus available, we'll work with Durham and try and shuffle things around and do whatever we can. And that's, that's one of the things that they do. They're, they are, they're open to accommodation. They do everything they can. They'll bend over. Last thing I'll say, and any, I'm sure that any bus company will do this, but on those few occasions when we had, when we had emergencies in our schools, and we had to move students from one school to another, Durham is just, they're unbelieving. They have drivers that are back that, when, a couple of years ago, when there was an incident at Harborside, when we had to transport the students to Law, they, it was so flawless. We, Durham had it down, because they work with us on those emergency operations plans all the time. It just, it really, it's a seamless operation.
I think, you know, as a board member, I've seen tremendous improvement in our transportation system over the past year, you know, 10 years. And I think, you know, I think we're in a pretty good place right now. And for me, I think the effort that it would take our staff to get back to that place with a new provider, it needs to be considered. You know, I know that you, you and Ms. Meslegidison, your other staff members work, spend a lot of time on transportation, and, you know, I think, you know, it's taken that, this many years to build that relationship with Durham to the place where you're at right now, where when things like that come up, it's, it doesn't take as much effort to, you know, put into place, it needs to be done, as you'd have to build that relationship again with somebody new.
From July to now, till the end of September, that's, that's really all the office does is transportation. It's a monumental task, when you consider the numbers that we have and the number of groups of students. So anyway.
Mr. Federico.
Thank you, Madam Chair. How long is the current contract with Durham?
It was a three-year extension that expires.
A three-year extension? Okay. So now we're looking at a new five-year contract. So I hear what you're saying about the relationship, and I think there is something to that, and I think that means a little bit more to me perhaps than the cost, since the cost is, like you said, in the top third, it's not, we're not hugely, you know, off from some of the, some of the better rates. I'm wondering if, what happens if in year three, four, or five, we start to drop to the bottom of the schedule? That, you know, you can't see that far out, what the other districts are getting, so when we get into those later years, can you revisit? You're locked into that five-year contract, right?
The reason, the reason that we're proposing five years as opposed to three is because the whole fleet has to be turned over.
Okay.
And the cost to Durham, to be able to do that in a three-year, in a three-year period of time, they really were asking for a much higher percentage of increase for those three years, because they're trying to re-keep some of their bus, brand-new buses and brand-new fleet. And I think that's what we, that's another thing that we would be up against with bringing in another district. They have to provide a brand-new fleet right off the bat, and somewhere along the line, they're going to try and re-keep those costs. And maybe, maybe it's not the first year, maybe they can move a lower price the first year to lure us in, but I think eventually, we're going to pay for a brand-new fleet of buses.
So these, so over the course of the five years, by the end of the five years, the entire fleet will be brand-new?
Right.
Okay. And just, just another comment, just another thought, going back to what Dr. Fieser said, you know, I think that this district has been through a lot in terms of change and transition with reconfiguration, and I would be a little leery to put us in a position where we might have another major change like this, and I think this could potentially be a major change, to change the bus company. So I'd have some concerns about that.
Mr. Jagzinski?
I agree with Mrs. Federico. I think, you know, there's a lot of risk here, and probably the bottom line, it would be a very modest savings. I just don't think that the potential savings is worth the risk that we would incur.
So I'm going to suggest, maybe Mrs. Griffin, sorry. Can you go down, do a roll call and just whether or not you want yes or no to going out to an RFP?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. De Grego.
Through you, Madam Chair. I also want to say, we've been talking about the money and the savings, but as a police officer with 26 years' experience, it takes me about 20 seconds to inspect the bus from the outside. And in all the years that I've seen Durham in practice, I've never found one violation of any kind. In addition, I'd like to say, Madam Chair, especially in my area of the neighborhood on North, North Street and West, and Harborside, excuse me, North Street and Wolf Harbor Road, there's so many nooks and crannies that these bus drivers have to go in in all kinds of weather. And the amount of professionalism and expertise I see that they use is priceless. And you can't put a price on the safety that they show day in and day out. Not only that, whenever I go to the beach area, or I'm driving by Law High School, or I'm going for a haircut and I'm driving by East Shore, it's the same professional courtesy throughout this city that every driver for Durham shows day in and day out. And I would just like to say, that's not included in a price, but that's what Durham shows with the kind of drivers that they hire. And I, every day, every year, I see the same drivers. They don't go through drivers left and right, they go through drivers with experience, and that's also what you get with Durham. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. De Grego.
Can I just say one more? I just, I did a quick looking at this, it's $30 a bus savings from the cheapest one, it's $1,800 a year without.
No, $1,800, that's what I did too. $1,800 per day, right?
Per day?
Oh, per day. I did the same thing at first, I was like, no, that's not right.
But modest fuel cost, it's still not that much.
It is a modest, I think it is a modest, you know.
Based on the total cost of the transportation and the total cost of our budget.
So we'll just have.
I got one more question.
Yes.
Now, you said they're changing over the whole fleet of the bus. Have you guys, are they looking into the new natural gas buses that a lot of towns and cities are switching into, because the cost savings on the fuel consumption for that? Because I know with the diesels, they have to start them up way early in the morning to heat them up. The natural gas, you don't have to do that, it's a huge savings on fuel. Are they looking into that?
They are? That's, that's the simple answer. However, the initial outlay is much greater than, than diesel-fueled bus. In addition, there's not a lot of natural gas fueling stations that Durham can, that Durham can access. And so right now, they have, they fuel right on their property, which besides savings, the savings in the pump price, it's also reduces the amount of downtime that they have a driver driving to where they have to fuel up. And I'm not, I'm not aware of any natural gas fueling stations that are.
That's why I was asking, I want, you know, and I know a lot of the other places have the same fuel tanks they keep on site, whether it be First Student, All-Star, they pretty much, a lot of them do the same thing with that. So that's easy enough for us.
Yeah.
I was just wondering with the natural gas, because I know there's a huge savings.
Yeah, there's, there's a number of, I mean, it's very big, it's very big out, in, I think in the Midwest. I actually took a course at school transportation, and alternative fuels was one of the topics that we looked at. And in certain parts of the country where it's much more predominant, the fueling stations are close by. I honestly don't know if there's any in Connecticut. There may be, but I don't know of any. I've heard of one district, one other district, that hasn't gone to natural gas, but has gone to propane. The initial outlay was huge, but, but they were committed to the green element of more than, you know, the environmental element of more than the cost. I think for a fleet, and it was also a very small district, so they didn't have a lot of buses to put out. I think to, I think the cost would be prohibitive for Durham to do, and then the fuel.
Any other questions or discussion on this? So I think in the interest of time, let's just do a show of hands, people that would like to go out to an RFP, see how many board members feel we should go out to an RFP. I see just one. So the consensus is to have administration enter into negotiations. Do you want that in a formal motion, or?
It would be okay.
Okay, all right. Mr. Tobias.
Okay, make a motion to authorize administration to enter into negotiations to extend our current contract with Durham.
Second. Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Roll call.
Claire Casey?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Motion to authorize administration to enter into negotiations.
Michael De Grego?
Yes.
Suzanne De Bias?
Yes.
Jennifer Federico?
Yes.
Dr. Jess Gregory?
No.
Walter Hagedor?
Yes.
Tom Jagzinski?
Yes.
Susan Kryzinski?
Yes.
Earl Whiskeman?
Yes.
Susan Clement?
Yes.
Nine.
The motion carries nine yes, one no.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for your work on this.
The next item on the agenda is the October 1 enrollment report. I'm sorry, the proposed budget priorities and assumptions, my error. So you have in there, in your packet, the assumptions and priorities that were brought forth last month with one change in language on the assumptions, which is in red there. Mainly salaries for all employees will increase on average to three and a half percent, which includes contractual stepping prices for employees as well as minimum wage increases. In that, there were no changes. So if the board is accepting of these, it's in a position to.
Discussion, board members? So you've none then, Mrs. De Bias, the motion?
Yeah, make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves the 2017-18 budget priorities and assumptions as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to the October 1 enrollment report.
Thank you. Included in your board packet was the enrollment, this is the official enrollment that we sent to the state for October 1st. You can see on the first page, this is our elementary classes, and on the second page, we have our secondary, our middle schools and high schools. Overall, as stated in the board agenda, that the decrease from the previous year was a total of 244 students. Do you have any questions associated with this?
I wanted to ask, I, I appreciate the difficulty that we have, especially in certain schools where there's a lot of transient in and out, but I was, I am kind of surprised by some of the number, the class sizes and the, I'm all for small class size, but when I look at, for instance, Meadowside, third, fourth, and fifth grade with, you know, 14 and 15 per student, when even looking back at the, at the, what we had in August, where, you know, they were, at that point, third and fourth grade was estimated to be at 46 and 48, which, you know, could have, could have been two teachers. And then we have Live Oaks up top, which has the same numbers, 44 and 44 in third and fourth grade, that only have two classes. Can you speak to that a little bit? I, you know, I know that there was a lot of movement in and out, I know it's difficult to estimate based on last year's numbers, and you have to make the decision within a certain length of time.
In particular, and you are accurate, in particular, Meadowside has the highest rate of transit going on with their upper grades. We were over, at one point, we were closer to 50 in those three areas, and we also know that this is a school with greater needs, so that's also a consideration when we're looking at staffing. But that has changed since the start of school, those numbers have decreased in those upper grades, as you point out.
I would add that, you know, we keep, historically, we look at the fluctuation in enrollment, particularly over the summertime. Meadowside has the greatest fluctuation, and for the last several years, the numbers have increased significantly right at the start of the year or into September. I mean, we, we just track that, you know, you know, which are the schools sort of the most stable, and then which are the schools where there's the greatest, again, the fluctuation. And so Meadowside, that was part of also the anticipation of, based upon history, and the fact that we did have some higher numbers, but overall, their numbers are down, and we, we honestly don't know why, because it's, it's, you know, what's the word I'm looking for? It's a, it's not the norm for what has been an anomaly, thank you, over the last several years at Meadowside.
In particular, also, pumpkin delight, we anticipated to see more enrollment, and especially the last week of August into the first couple of weeks of September. And to Dr. Fieser's point, you know, Meadowside, in September, we saw a significant increase, I believe, of grade three this past year, that raised the class average significantly at that point.
In Capit Meadow, too, you've got in third grade, 45 students with three teachers, and fourth grade, 45 students with two. Can you speak to that one?
I think part of what happens is, is that, you know, so you could have, you know, you could have 57% of the grade level, and then you have a couple of families who move. So I don't remember what school it was, but, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we had a family withdraw, there are four children in the school system. So, you know, so that starts to impact. I just, I guess what we're saying is, is that we are really mindful of the fact that some of these class sizes are very rich, and, you know, it begs the question, you know, do we, do we really stick very closely to the board guidelines, or do we, you know, kind of say, wait a second here, we can't continue to automatically start to move in a particular direction because we're one for two over.
Yeah, I, you know, I understand you would, you would never be able to, once school starts, or once you, once you've identified, you know, and notified families what, who their teachers, you know, what classes their children will be, and you certainly can't reduce, take a teacher away, you know, if the class size diminishes, and that seems to be kind of where we're, you know, where we're at this year. And I know it's not optimal to err, err on the larger side and then add a teacher if the enrollment goes up, but can, that may be, I don't know if that's something that might be the better option, if you're, if you're not sure.
It may, it may be, you know, but I think, again, some of it is, is that, first of all, overall, the enrollment on the elementary level is down from what was projected by NESPEC, what was projected, if you want to go back three years ago, by Malone and Brew, and clearly in terms of what we look at. It's just, and we do, we were, we were caught by that, you know? Kindergarten enrollment is down significantly. I think we were projected to have over 400, like, correct, kindergarteners and children this year, and we don't. So what was the number for?
Kindergarten was estimated at 419.
So when you look at that, that's 40, is that right? But. But, you know, fewer students, and we're perplexed as to why that applied.
Because when you look at the class size guidelines, there's actually, there's six, six, six classes that could have been reduced, and that's, I mean, that's a significant amount of, amount of money. It's over $350,000. Any other questions? Mrs. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was curious how this compares to the figures that were estimated by Malone and McBroom, and you mentioned that it's down. I'm just thinking, you know, I have the information in my old packets from about two years ago, but probably not every board member has that. Could you give us a comparison?
Sure, and then we already gave you NESPEC, we can give it to you again.
Okay.
And that was the, the strength in looking at both of those, although, as I said, Malone and McBrooms have not been updated. They're three-year-old data, at least, if not at this point, whereas NESPEC, it's one year.
Right.
You know, I think you pointed out that with respect to the high schools, they were off by one, which is pretty astounding.
Yes, I think both could be helpful, because, you know, obviously, we made decisions based on the Malone and McBroom data, so I'm curious to see how far off that is.
Mr. Whiskeman?
Just following up, along with that, one of my concerns here is that the reduction in enrollment has accelerated somewhat from the previous projections, and I have expressed in the past, hope that we would be bottoming out, and that we certainly would be continuing this decline. So, I understand that we really don't know why for certain, but it certainly, I think, behooves us to try to grapple with that from a future standpoint, to understand if we're facing some continuing decline, and if we can hopefully, you know, find some resources that might help us make some projections, because I think we're going to be faced with some serious considerations in the very near future if this continues.
And I do know that one thing I've been trying to keep abreast of is, you know, we do have two relatively large potential developments that will be going up, that do have two and three-bedroom units in them, which typically would equate to families.
Some additional students.
And those are both in the Wheeler's Farms Road, the West Ave area, so.
Yeah, it could be some development.
Yeah, and those are unknowns, yep, those are unknowns, but.
That could change things somewhat. We'll have to keep a close eye on that, and see if there's any way we can get a handle on.
I mean, there's still a few years off, but it's like they're going to happen, so. Any other questions?
So we are now moving on to policies, and believe it or not, we're to the last batch of the 1000s. And the first policy that's in your packet, however, is the videotaping of staff and students, which actually was brought to you in the first batch. So this is really coming up to you for a third reading, and just to refresh your memory, when it was before you, at the last board meeting, business meeting, there was a question on the second page, the paragraph at the top of the page, and the question, if I remember correctly, Dr. Gregory, you raised the question, which was a good one, which was, you know, what if, you know, as part of a PPT, that a student might be recorded? And I remember I responded, well, that would, you know, supersede, but you said, would it not make sense to have something like that in writing? So, we took this to our attorneys, and this actually is language from them. What they did indicate to us is that it would be extremely rare that you would have a student be videotaped, extremely rare, but that there could be a case where that would happen. So this was the language that was suggested.
Does that address your concerns?
Absolutely.
So is there any conversation on, on this policy before we move to approve it, with this change? Is everybody's satisfaction? Okay, Mr. Tobias?
Yep, make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves policy number 1112.6, videotaping of staff students as a member.
Is there a second?
Second.
Federico seconded, any further discussion? You seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The next five policies are all for a first reading. We have not, this is, we just have not gotten to these. Some of these were specific policies that board members had asked to be pulled out so that there could be discussions around them, and some of them are simply the last policies.
Actually, they were all ones that a board member asked to have pulled out.
Okay, so we want to move through these, policy by policy. The first one is 1313, which is gifts to school personnel by outside contractors.
And everybody should have their packets, their original packets. Okay, so 1313, is there any conversation on this? Mr. Jagosinski?
Yeah, well, two things, one minor, I think the semicolon after gift is not appropriate, I don't know.
Where's that?
Why would we have that? Oh, I'm sorry, the third paragraph. No board member or employee shall direct their end directly, but more substantive, I can't envision any event where a person would accept money, cash in any form, from a vendor.
I don't know, give me two bucks for a cup of coffee, I mean, come on, yeah, I mean, it's possible.
Well, that's a cup of coffee, it's not $2.
Well, I don't know, I, I don't see any reason with covering all the bases. I guess in a policy, I would hope it wouldn't happen, but, you know, it's, it's a value of, so you're just, you're objecting to the word money in that third paragraph?
Yeah, I would suggest that we say, or accept, or receive money of any amount, or gift having a value of $25, or more, whether in the form of services, loan, travel.
So, just for clarification, one is, is I just want to remind you that this was the original policy that's in black. The second thing is, is that while I would agree probably cash is not given, we've moved to a society where gift cards are very common, so it could be conceivable that somebody's given a $25 gift card to Dunk and Donuts, for example, you know, I mean, that, or to, I don't know, the Apple Store, et cetera. So, I mean, I, the language certainly, some of it may not be up to date, but I think the issue of people receiving, if not cash, then, you know, is still very real. So, I would hope that at least whatever language we use, that we would keep the amount in the $25.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that we take out the $25. I'm really just suggesting that we disallow cash of any form.
Of any amount, so you're, you're saying that we should disallow cash of any rate?
Right.
Oh, I see, okay.
Aren't gift cards considered cash, basically? It says on the back of the card there. Although, they can't be deemed as cash.
Says that, too.
Would a vendor give a gift card like that?
I don't know, do vendors, you know?
I mean, typically, they're, you know, a box of candy, or a box of donuts, or.
True, I, yeah. If you're trying to cover all the bases, I agree, it's, you know, it's, just as you said, a box of candy, fruit, something like that. A mug with a name on it, you know?
Except, for example, I've said, I can't think of who, but I know that I've seen requests to have surveys be done. They never offer superintendents anything, but for teachers, seriously, you know, I've seen surveys where people have been said, if you complete this survey, you know, you will receive a gift certificate of, you know, or gift card of, you know? And I don't remember if it's $25, but I know, sometimes looking at it, thinking, wow, that's a lot of money if you're going to have 500 people fill out the survey, or whatever. So, I honestly don't know, but it's conceivable. And I think probably when this was written, which was in 1993, that people did give cash, so your point is well taken, maybe in a gift card, might have been given, could have been given to a teacher of the holidays or something, so.
Okay, it's a fairly small point, I.
Well, I think we certainly could put cash in there, you know, cash or gift cards.
Well, I think it, I just, I'm thinking in terms of the cumbersomeness of the wording. I understand your point. Your point, if I'm understanding correctly, is that, is that nobody should be accepting money, period. So, I almost think you need to have a separate sentence, you know, that a separate sentence, that no board member or employee shall accept money in any amount, period, and then go on with the rest of the paragraph, and kind of put the two of them, you know, separated out.
That's exactly what I'm trying to get at.
So then, does money then also apply to a gift card? That's what we're.
I, I don't, I don't know. I, money to me is cold hard cash, money.
Yeah, but like, a lot of people get around, as in businesses, they give out gift cards because they have to write that off versus cash.
Well, is a gift card, if it's under $25, if it's, what, it has to be under $25, except then you get under $25. Is a gift card okay? I mean, it's under $25.
Yeah.
I think what Mr. Jagosinski is objecting to is the cash.
Cash.
Being, you know, somebody slipping you a $20.
It's untraceable.
Right? Yeah. It is, you're right, it is untraceable, that's good, a gift card would not necessarily be untraceable. I mean, I have no problem with gift card.
Well, you know, I certainly, I certainly agree, because, not to bring in athletics again, but sometimes exchanges could be possible in cases where their favors are wanted, or things like that go on, much more so than, say, in an ordinary classroom environment, you know? I'm going to bribe your teacher to give your kids a better grade.
These are only outside contractors.
Yeah, these are just.
Not parents.
So would we be okay with simply saying, we'll divide this into two sentences? The first sentence would be, no board member or employee shall accept money in any amount, period. And then, the next sentence would begin, nor may any board member or employee directly or indirectly solicit any gift, et cetera. I would like to suggest, however, that we take out the term "money" in the second line, because we already said they can't accept any money, so in the form of services, loan, blah, blah, blah. Do we want to put in here gift cards?
Yeah, you could.
Yes, to say any other form.
I would definitely put that in there.
So much more common today.
That way you have your, yourself covered.
Great.
You don't have, you don't have any cash being exchanged.
By money, we actually mean cash.
Right?
By money, we actually mean cash.
We do, I had a student, when I was a high school principal, who outgave, offered me $400 if I would change failing grade to a passing grade.
Really?
That's the honest to goodness truth. I was ethical and said no.
Wow.
All right, so if we're okay with that, we'll move on to policy 1323, which is on donations
Yes, Mrs. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question, in the third paragraph, so it's the current language, the second sentence, students, parents, and other patrons of the district will be discouraged from the routine presentation of gifts to district employees. So, I'm surprised to read that, because as an elementary school parent, I've often received an email from a room parent saying, no obligation, and it's very nice, it's no obligation, but if you would like to contribute, we are putting together a class gift for the teacher. And that's routine, so I was surprised to read the language that it's discouraged. So I don't know if putting this into place is going to change that, and I just wanted to understand a little bit more about how you're looking at it.
Well, I guess I'm surprised by what you're saying, that it's routine, so routine for me means regularly it happens?
Once a year, well, usually twice this time, end of school year, twice a year, and it's, it's every, yeah, every elementary class that my children have been in.
So, I wasn't necessarily aware of that, but what I would say, I'm not defending it, but that is not routine in my mind?
Okay.
That's, I mean, it's not necessarily specified that, but.
I don't have an issue with it. I wanted to know how it would be implemented, because I think you would have a lot of parents who would have an issue with it if we started to say, you can't do that, or discourage. I didn't know how we, how we would implement discouraging, because it doesn't say forbidden or not allowed, it just says discouraged. But if you don't consider that routine twice a year, then.
I don't. I guess the question becomes, and is, is that we don't have any control over what students, parents, or other patrons. We do have control over what staff can accept, which is the policy before it. So, it may be that we need to make sure that we're in sync, language-wise, so, so that the gifts would not be, well, they're not supposed to accept money, but, and they're, of course, those are from vendors, these are not vendors.
So, if I could add, I kind of grappled with that as well at first, but when I, because, I mean, it's pretty, and it is semantics as to what you consider routine, because I know I always gave my child, my child's teacher a small gift at the holidays or at the end of the school year, but this is just simply saying that it's discouraged, it's not saying, as you said, you can't do it, it's just, I think it just makes a statement that, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to be seeming like we're encouraging it, so we're saying, discourage it.
And I think my question is, how are we discouraging it?
It's just in this policy. It's just one, I think it's, to me, it's one of those things that it's, it's there, you write it down, and you can just say, well, we do discourage it, because it's in our policy, but I don't, there is no active discouraging, I don't believe there is an active discouraging.
Do you think that the new language in the, excuse me, I'm sorry, Dr. Gregory? Oh, no, I just, I was unaware that the parents were collaborating towards larger gifts, and I am a little uncomfortable with that.
Well, what do you mean, larger? So it's usually, it's usually a small, you know, a small amount per person, put together, towards a gift card or something.
Couple dollars?
Teacher would like.
Five to 10?
Five, yes, no, never more than five.
Twenty kids, there's a couple hundred bucks, you know?
That's where, that's where it was on this, that's why it got weird.
Well, or it could be, it could be 20 parents going out and spending $25, I mean, it's, it's optional.
And it's always, yes, it's always very clear that there's no obligation, only if you would like to, you know, let's give the teacher something that she could use, he or she could use, rather than.
I had an aunt who was a teacher for a long time, and I can remember at the holidays, she would bring up, you know, the boxes of all the gifts that she would get from her students, and they were, it was an interesting collection.
The one thing I want to add to that, though, is, at least in my experience, it's never been, I mean, it'll be a $200 or $300 gift, but it's never been only the kids that gave got to sign it, it was a, truly a class gift, whether or not every child or every family was able to contribute. I don't think I've ever seen it be, you know, so and so was left out. I don't think I've ever seen it be, you know, so and so was left out.
There's still the amount.
It's the amount, and that there might be differences in the schools. This is something that elementary school teachers would be getting, whereas middle school, high school teachers may get less inclined to get. Like, there's just, there's differences there that are, I just never considered. You know, when it's a mug full of, like, Hershey kisses. Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa. But once you mention people collaborating and getting together on something larger, it just gets a little weird.
But middle school and high school don't just have one teacher. I mean, they're switching, so I don't know if it'd be the same. A lot of kids want to, you know, give something to their teacher, they do, but I don't think.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't have a problem with it continuing. I wanted to know if this language is intended to, well, discourage us or stop that.
Well, certainly the, the new language under the subtitle here, Gifts to School Personnel, basically says that we, you know, the board expresses appreciation, but does not encourage the giving of gifts. I mean, it's good, you know, we saw that language in another policy and thought that would be important for us to put in here. Recognizing the economic, you know, continuum on which, you know, families exist. And, you know, at first I read it and thought, well, I don't know about this language. But then starting to think, why not? Simple tokens such as pictures, poems, or cards from a student are entirely appropriate, et cetera. So if, if you were, I think it would be, if you wanted to limit what a gift could be, I think that you certainly could do that. And then the word goes out to?
Uh-uh.
Parents and teachers. This is how much you can receive.
I'm not comfortable with that, and I, I mean, I don't, I don't think that we really can dictate to parents what they would like, what they want to do. And that, that has come up in conversation with other policies. And we, we can say that we discourage it, period, but to, to tell them, a parent, what they can or can't do in terms of giving a gift to a teacher, I don't see that we can really do that. Mr. Whiskin, it?
The fourth paragraph in the 1323, it seems to me that this paragraph might fit better over on the previous one. We talked about 1313 because it infers person, firm, corporation, et cetera, as opposed to just ordinary donations and gifts, you know, people presumably connected to the school through, like, parents and that kind of thing. So I'm just thinking that the way in which that's constructed might better fit under the other policy.
It actually is almost verbatim part of it.
And it seems to be almost a duplicate.
What was the original language?
Well, it is, it's very similar to what we just talked about in terms of the $25 paragraph, the third paragraph on 1323.
I, I don't, do we really need to repeat the same message in two different policy statements? I don't, I don't think so, that's all.
Because it's specific to business dealings.
Well, these are outside.
Well, that's, and then this one too, it talks about business dealings.
But they, they would be potential outside contractors, right?
Sometimes, yes, sometimes.
Yes, Dr. Gregory?
While we can't mandate what parents and children choose to do, we can't set policies for what the faculty and staff accept.
Are you suggesting a change in language?
I just was addressing the, you know, we can't control what the parents do, and that's absolutely true, but we do have a say in what the faculty and staffs accept.
Along with that, a rewording of that sentence, instead of saying students, parents, and other patrons, just say, staff will discourage students, parents, and other patrons from the routine presentation of gifts. That way, your policy is set to focus on the staff, to say, you're directed to discourage this.
If you'd like, I could go back and look at some other policies and see if they're what the language is in other districts. See if there's something more explicit.
Was this K wording in the red?
Is this the, right.
Okay, is that agreeable?
We're going to rework that one a little.
Is there anything else with this policy? Mr. Hagedorn?
Do you know why the paragraph where it says, no tickets of any purpose, when that whole paragraph was deleted from there?
Dr. Pizer?
Do they want to sell tickets, you know, students or teachers start selling tickets? Because, you know, then students start collecting money, and everybody knows he has a big wad of money, gets jumped after school. You know, is that why this was put in there, or I don't know why I was thinking that.
It doesn't, I don't, it doesn't seem to belong here.
Well, it doesn't belong. It's talking about tickets, sales.
Did they move it to another area?
Pardon me?
Did they move that to another area?
I don't know that we moved it to another area, but it didn't belong under donations and gifts.
Yeah, I understand that, but I just, I didn't see it anywhere else, that's why.
It may be in one of the other, I mean, it may be in the 5,000s, I'm not really sure. But we just looked at that and just said, why is this talking about tickets being sold? It just didn't seem to fit.
Yeah, I know, I would just look at it.
The whole other series would be, if it's anywhere, it would be in a different series.
Okay. Well, we just make a note to look for that in there.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Federico?
If I may comment on this question, you know, I think it's a very difficult one, and I think it's, it's a good reminder to think about the economics and the equity. And it's a very fair point to consider, but before we made any further change, I would want to hear from administration, and maybe you can get a little feedback about what is going on in the schools. And if this is a problem, I, I don't want to fix something that's not a problem. And if, if it's working fine today and there aren't issues with it, I don't want to make it more complicated by the policy.
We could do that.
Okay.
All right.
Yep.
The next one is the policy on relations with law enforcement, and you can see that this is totally brand new. This was recommended by Cave. I will say that it was reviewed very carefully by Jeff Nielsen, in concert with Jim Tuttelli.
Jeff Nielsen being the?
Our safety coordinator.
Safety coordinator. Questions on this policy, comments?
I originally asked for it, but in discussions with myself, I resolved the issue.
Did you have a call? Any other concerns with this policy, then? If not, it'll just move forward for a second reading. Okay.
Then we have policy on fiscal authority.
Mr. Jagosinski?
I did have questions on that. Exactly who is the fiscal authority?
So I, when I reread this, I said, oh my gosh, did we do this?
Well, that was my second question.
And then realized, we do that every year. And here's my letter that I signed this year, that I shouldn't remember that I signed it. It's, it's, we actually looked it up, and it's, it is by law. It's stated right here, and we looked up the Connecticut General Statutes, and it's exactly right there. And I contacted Floyd Dugus, and he said, you have in fact complied with this policy. Each year we would prepare letters to the Fiscal Authority for all teacher and administrator negotiations and forward them to the superintendents for review and signing. And then he sent me the copy that we did, for example, for the negotiations that have just been completed. And this was sent to Brian Lima, Chairman of the Board, when he was Chairman of the Board of Finance. Please be advised, and then there's the General Statutes, that the Board of Education will be commencing negotiations with its teachers, fire being unit. Please advise us to whether the Board of Finance wishes to meet and confer regarding these negotiations. As the fiscal authority, they are, the Board of Finance is also entitled to have a representative present as an observer during the negotiations. To my knowledge, they've never taken us up on that, but this is sent to them.
Yeah, that was my question, because we had just done the contract negotiation. The other thing on the first paragraph, I was wondering if it would make more sense to say, the Milford Board of Education shall work with the Board of Finance and the Board of Alderman throughout the budget process to ensure a clear understanding of school and student needs, as opposed to the current language.
How do you measure that? The language here is softer and doesn't call for you to try to measure what is a clear understanding?
This kind of implies that it's an iterative process, and there's a back and forth, which in reality, there really isn't. I mean, you know, we go before the board and explain what our position is.
Oh, there's back and forth, for sure. They ask lots of questions. They ask for additional information, which they're provided with. You know, it is, I mean, it's basically done as part of that whole budget presentation, but it takes place over the course of several months. You're meeting with several different groups, you know, the Board of Finance and the Board of Alderman. But there's, there is back and forth.
Okay, I understand.
Any other questions on this one? Are you fine with leaving the words developed?
Or are you? Yeah.
Ready to ensure. Fine with leaving it developed? Okay. So this is ready, then, to move on for a second reading and approval, without any changes?
So then the last policy is relations between area, state, regional, and national associations and schools. And this was, again, a policy that was recommended by Cave.
So do you want to, Dr. Gregory, I know you asked for this one.
I would like the policy written by Cave to remove the reference directly to Cave, but in spirit, I like it very much. I just don't want a specific entity to do it.
I can appreciate that.
I agree that.
And it actually, it's more, it's more in compliance with our bylaws, which also say that we will have a membership in an association, but it doesn't have a name. It just says, "an association." So I have no problem with removing, such as the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. Does anyone have some support? Does anybody object to that, removing that language from the policy? Any other questions on this one, then?
So then, just to be clear, we're going to move all of the policies forward for a second reading, with the exception of policy 1323, which is on the one on donations.
Well, it could go on to a second reading, but it may have some.
Well, that's if I bring changes.
If you, if you're ready with changes at the committee of the whole meeting, it can, you can bring those recommended changes forward, and if we're comfortable with them, we can still approve it at the committee of the whole meeting.
The other thing that I would ask is, did you, I'm sorry, I'm a little spacing here. Did we want to vote on the videotaping policy since it is a third reading tonight?
We didn't?
I think we did.
I thought we did.
We did.
We did, okay.
Yeah. Yes, we did.
Sorry about that. I'm losing it, what can I say?
So 1501, 416 and 1411 had no changes to them, so they're ready to go on to approval after a second reading.
1500 had a change.
1500 had a change, right, but we're, we're all in agreement with that change, I'm sorry. And then 1323, you're going to look at additional wording, but we may be ready for, for that, if we're happy with the wording. And then 1313 is ready for second reading and potential approval with some, with that modification. Is what I have written down. I would really like to get these done with the next one.
All right, then. So we are now to the Human Resources Report, Mrs. Pasner?
Thank you. You have your monthly report listing the job postings, the recommendations, retirement reservations, interminations, and stipends. Let's see, it's a very busy month as far as stipends go. I would like to point out an error, in case anyone caught it. Under the High School Advisor stipends, there's a worksheet for foreign and a worksheet for law. The worksheet for law is incorrect only in the amounts listed. What happened was the law folks must have taken their worksheet from last year and just substituted the names and sent it over, and they didn't catch it. This was such a busy month. So we found that out today, we corrected it with payroll, so everyone will be paid with correct amounts. But just as far as the fact it goes, the foreign amounts are correct. And if you look at the law amounts, they should be slightly higher up to what the foreign amounts are. Because obviously, it is in a lot of old schools. So these are all our activity and advisor stipends, as well as middle school activities, student assistance, team stipends, et cetera. Coaching stipends for the fall. And I also want to point out on our new hires, just to keep you update, up to date with the total hires that we have, for as far as teachers, though, we're up to 38 new teachers hired, representing all 14 schools plus the academy and representing 21 distinct certification areas. So we're definitely closing in on finishing hiring teachers. I believe we have two more that we're looking for, behaviorists and a reading intervention specialist over at Harborside. Those are the only two openings at this point. Please announce.
Questions for Mrs. Pasner? Mr. Jagosinski?
Just one question. The long-term substitutes, are those to cover specific openings, or are they on call?
Yeah, those are to cover usually typically maternity leaves or medical upcoming, you know, surgeries that we're aware of, that we have the luxury of knowing about ahead of time. You can get somebody fully qualified and certified to take over for that exact teacher in that exact spot for a predetermined amount of time, typically.
Ms. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There seems to be a very long list of resignation, terminations, substitute teachers. Is there a decline in the need, and also in adult ed?
Thank you, I should point that out. No, it's basically clean up. At the end of every year, at every day, we send out a list, basically an election form. Want to sub with us next year, yes or no? Those that have said no, we resign. If we don't hear from them in a timely fashion, we terminate them, assuming that they don't want to work for us anymore. Just to keep our records clean and our payroll records clean, so we don't have people hanging on for four and five years that haven't actually actively submitted for us.
Okay.
And if they want, choose to come back to us, we, you know, we rehire them, it's not an issue, but it just keeps things clean.
Okay. Is it the same case for adult ed?
Yes. Well, a lot of the adult ed, it's slightly different because maybe their forces, they don't have enough students to run, or, you know, or again, they haven't responded to certain mail-in, similar.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
I had a question on volunteer coaching positions.
Yes.
So are they, I'm assuming that all of our coaches, our paid coaches, go through background checks?
Correct.
Do the volunteers also have to go through a background check?
They actually do. They have to go through background checks, as well as they have to be certified, our volunteers. volunteers.
Okay, so.
So it's really, I mean, there's no guide, but it's money out of their pocket to take the CPR and the first aid and to apply for the Connecticut certification.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
The next item is the quarterly budget report. Richardelli?
Thank you. As, as you know, we come to you at the end of each quarter with the, kind of a forecast of where we're going and where we were for the previous quarter. As I say each time, we, we come to you as is required by the board policies, to do it on a quarterly basis, but we're looking at the budget all the time. So this is the end of the first quarter. There's, there's not a tremendous amount to talk about. We don't see any areas at this point that we have concern over. The only negative that you'll see, where an account is in deficit, is in Account 5601, which is Special Education Tuition. But as I point out to you each time, those are reimbursable by the State, State Excess Cost Grant, and so those will be covered by the end of the year, where we have deficits in those accounts. We'll see those deficits grow over time. And that's, that's basically it. If you have any specific questions on a specific line item, certainly can take a stab at answering it for you.
Mr. Jagosinski?
I just have a general question. On adjusted budget, in fact, have any of the budget figures been adjusted?
They could be. Within, within the, each series, within 1,000 series, we have the ability to move dollars in between 1,000 series, same thing with 2,000 series. We cannot transfer any kind of money from one series to another. Those have to come as board transfers.
Where does the authority come from to be able to transfer within a series?
It's in your policy governance.
Okay.
I believe it's EL.7, but it could be more.
Any questions?
So the next agenda item is the disbursement report.
And again, as you know, we really need a disbursement report to you, which represents a listing of all expenditures over $1,500 for the previous month. They're all listed there for you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I had a question on the first two lines, because they kind of jumped out at me. Why are we paying Bank of America Energy Conservation Services?
Sure. Good question. The, as I, as I think I've told the board, we have, we're moving in the direction of solar power at our schools, and we applied for and were awarded Z-Rex through United Illuminating Company and the Connecticut Green Bank. In order for us to hold that award, we have to give them an assurance. So funds, funds came out of the Energy Conservation line item in the budget, and that represents the, it's a, it's a percentage of the Z-Rex cost in order to hold, in order to accept the award and hold it for future solar installations. So that's a fact. Oh, and they only accept bank checks.
Okay.
That's, that's the real answer. They would not take a Board of Education nor a city check.
Okay.
So we have to.
You have to get a certified check for it.
Okay.
So does the Greenpoint Energy LLC, the $1,600 for solar, does that have something to do with that same thing?
Which, um.
How far down is that?
It's two-thirds of the way down.
1-854-67?
Yes.
Solar power agreement.
Yes, no, that's not. That, that is existing solar. We, we already have solar panels at foreign high school. They've been there for at least a decade. It's a very small amount. It was an array that was put in when solar first started to become available, and the district put a certain amount up there, and so that's the cost of those.
Mr. Jagosinski?
Yeah, Mr. Richutelli, I'm assuming that FY in the first column is fiscal year?
Yes.
Why are we still having items going to the '15 budget?
Sure. We encumber money at the end of the year. If we have an expenditure that we know we're going to spend, we'll, we'll encumber the money, and until that purchase order is complete, we will pay it down. When we come to you, a perfect example of this is when we come to you next month with the Summer Projects Report, and we list out all of the summer projects that took place. Some of them have $15, $16, there may even be $14, $15 if a project started two years ago but isn't complete until now.
Other questions?
On solar, we're still paying for, on there. Do we have, like, a lease on there or a loan that we're paying? And if you add it for that loan, how much, how much more life do you know is on that loan?
It's a 20-year.
20-year lease?
We're not paying for, we're not paying for the lease. That's the energy that we purchase, and similar to the project that we're going to be bringing for you in the future. The solar panels will be owned by a company financed by the Connecticut Green Bank, so the district won't have to put any money out. That company will install them on our roofs, and then our obligation is to pay for the electricity that's generated from the solar panels over the life of the.
At a lower rate than what?
At a lower rate than what we're paying. Correct. And so that's the payment for the energy that's being generated at form.
Dr. Gregory?
Possibly a misunderstanding, but what I just heard you say is that we don't pay for the panels.
Correct.
Yet there's $17,000 that went to this company because we got the award?
No. It goes to the United Illuminating Company to hold our award for the Z-Rex. Once, once the, once, once we commit to putting them on our roofs, we'll get that money back. It's a deposit.
Other questions? Okay.
And that's the last of our reports.
Okay, very good. That's agenda. Motion, Mr. Vice?
Okay, make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves consent agenda items, number one, consideration of minutes from September 12, 2016 Business Meeting, and September 26, 2016 Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then we move on to new business. We have a motion, Mr. Vice.
Yep. Make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves the working agreement between Milford Board of Education and the Milford Education Association from September 1, 2017 through August 31, 2020.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Board comment? Mr. Gregory?
10 seconds, Madam Chair. On October 27, at 6:00 p.m., in the Parsons Veterans Memorial Auditorium, the Milford Prevention Council, in sponsorship with the Milford Kiwanis Club, will have a free public showing of the FBI documentary, Chasing the Dragon, The Life of an Opiate Addict. This 45-minute documentary examines the epidemic of prescription drug and opiate abuse from first-person accounts by addicts and their family members about their experiences. This program contains strong language and graphic images. Viewer discretion is advised. Thank you.
Very much. The Prevention Council's also having a drug take that day coming up, I think, right? With the police department, following prescriptions. Any other board comment? Seeing none, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.